Feeding into, because it's going to be smaller. I don't see how that happens.
I, I, I want to be clear. Um, I don't see that. I see us, I, I want to be just as upfront as I can be. We were so fortunate, as Jake referenced, our previous boundary change from over a decade ago, to clean up a lot of split schools. We will have split schools. I just, I, I might, if, I would imagine Director, uh, President Meraldo. Um, and again, I, we haven't gone through the process, but I would see Maywood being, um, a direct feed into Liberty and probably half or so of East, uh, of middle school six.
So I think that needs to be on the charter. You need to just be upfront about, because it says one high.
It does say, um, and, and I already, it's, uh, Anne and I.
Mr. Cooper.
Anne and I already corresponded about this before the board meeting. She sent me a note right away. Um, even though it says ideally on there, uh, and not, you know, we shall, I agree, we could, we, we should probably be a little more, uh.
I'd say no more than two, right? We don't want.
You can use the language of the elementary and say a middle school shouldn't split into more than two high schools, right? And, and.
And I think that's probably realistic.
Oh, I, and I, as I, as I told, told Director Moore offline, um, we'll futz with that. Um, and either put that, change the word ideally out and just be a little clearer on the fact there'd be more than, more than likely be multiple splits.
Cause when Newcastle Commons, you already have middle schools that split to two high schools.
Yes.
Issaquah High now splits into two high schools.
Well, Issaquah Middle.
Okay, so we're fifteen minutes late already to start our meeting.
Doesn't bode well.
Yeah. Um, does anyone need a break between now and starting, or can I?
Yeah, oh, whatever.
Two minutes? Okay.
Thank, thank you all. I, I think we have, I have a, we have a, a, a pretty good grounding on where, uh, we should head.
Yeah, we've got some tweaks to the language, uh, on some of those materials, but I think, yeah, we know how to get prepared and move forward. Just, and again, to, with a goal of trying to wrap this process up, um, late winter, um, sometime in February, you know, so that folks will know, you know, at least eight months in advance of what the change would be.
Right. And we also have to ensure that, uh, we allow certificated staff the time to be able to be transferred and accessed and moved around and follow those students and be able to choose their new building and do their core team and all those things that Ms. Heckman would normally remind me of, but she doesn't have to anymore. And she just gets to smile.
Yeah. Okay, so I have, that is six fourteen. I'm going to give us two minutes. Things that the public is probably sick of hearing me say during public comment. So two minutes. Can you think of a couple of board members I'm waiting for? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Issaquah School Board to order, uh, for October twenty-second, twenty twenty. We have been in a work study, so I apologize, that ran a little late. Um, so we will start with the, uh, pledge of allegiance. So Stephen, if we could have the flag up, and then if you can, where you're standing, feel free to stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. So the first item on our agenda is, um, our student input, and we have two of our students with us today, Doris Wang and Alex Bennett. So we will toss it to you to provide your student input for this week. And do I have to tell you, you can unmute? Hold on. There you go.
All right. Um, hi, everyone. My name is Doris Wong. Um, I am a junior at IHS this year, and I am the ASV secretary.
There we go. Awesome. Um, I'm Alex Bennett, and I am a co-president at Issaquah High School.
Great. Um, so first of all, we'd like to talk about mental health. So, um, we're very fortunate to meet with, uh, Ms. Torelli, who is our mental health counselor. And previously, she was not, um, very prominent in the school and, um, uh, students went to her through referrals, so you couldn't really get direct contact with her. But, um, we have gotten a lot of feedback about mental health, especially, um, during virtual, um, learning. So we have met with Ms. Torelli and we're kind of, I guess, promoting her to student body, um, as someone they could go to for help. Um, and then also something very exciting that we're planning next week is going to be our Mental Health Spirit Week. So we're trying something new. Instead of like Halloween Spirit Week, we're gonna do like a Wellness Week, and then we're also gonna, um, introduce Ms. Torelli next week as well.
Great.
So our next thing is, um, a week or so ago, we went to a sort of convention with a lot of like student leaders around the state, mostly in the King County area. And we had a lot of great takeaways, met a lot of new people, and, um, we sort of got an opportunity to see how things were going um, with all the other high schools and all the other leadership classes and see what they've been up to. And, um, one of the things that we learned is that our district, but, um, and our school sort of has been a lot more strict than some other districts about allowing some in-person events. And what I mean by that is some schools have been able to do things like drive-through trick-or-treating, or they're planning events like that. Um, our district hasn't really been able to allow us to do that, and I understand their reasons for that, but that's just something that we learned. Um, we believe that having, uh, no in-person events is also kind of brings down school spirit for a lot of other high schools. And not being able to see your classmates, not being able to participate in any in-school activities, um, definitely has an impact on, you know, sort of student morale and how students can succeed in actual school. Um, yeah, so like I said, a project that we were thinking about doing in the future was a Halloween trick-or-treat sort of thing, where it would be like a drive-through. And we would have, you know, staff at the school or, um, you know, maybe leadership class members being able to like hand out things to members of the community. Um, we're having problems having it approved just because we're trying to figure out the nuts and bolts of what is okay and, um, you know, what precautions we need to take and things like that. Um, we know that Bothell High School is planning something like this as well.
Yeah. Um, so I guess that's our, like, problem with bonding as an entire school. But, um, our bonding within our, um, ASV class has been going very well. We have a system called, um, AS Buddies. Um, I find that very charming name. Um, but, uh, it's a system pairing returners from ASV class last year uh, with newcomers of ASV class this year, and that's just, uh, kind of making new friends because, um, socializing in a virtual setting is pretty difficult. Um, and they can help each other, um, for due dates, um, and things like that. And we're also, uh, looking into planning a social distance in person. Um, maybe get together in a park or something just to kind of strengthen that bond because obviously we are the ones that are, um, gonna reflect our school spirit. Um, so we really want to strengthen our bond.
Awesome. And, um, this is one of our last things, but it's kind of a big one. Um, so for the Issaquah School District, it says that cameras in classes are optional. Uh, but unfortunately, we've been getting, um, you know, feedback from students that some teachers are requiring cameras to be on as part of their participation points for the day. And we see that as somewhat problematic. Um, we think that a lot of students are, you know, really not comfortable with kind of letting, you know, their class or their teachers into their homes, and, um, you know, a lot of them are really uncomfortable with that sort of thing. And having teachers force it for a grade, it definitely puts a lot more undue pressure and stress on students that they wouldn't otherwise have. So that's a concern that we have. We're gonna look into that more within our school. Uh, we don't know, this has been happening more across the district, but this is something that we've been hearing about at our school. Um, the next thing is, uh, extended due dates. So, uh, this is, there's a little bit of nuance involved in this because last year, um, especially second half of last year, is really hectic, especially for students. Um, we were kind of given a lot of time off, and then when we were, um, kind of getting back into the school and getting back in the swing of things, um, students were given certain accommodations and students were, you know, uh, told that they would have, if they completed the required assignments, that they would have an equal or better grade than they ended with at like the last grade check. Um, this year, we have had some accommodations, but not all of them are mandated. They're just encouraged. And while I understand that, you know, you need a union mandate in order for these things to happen, rather than just, uh, a message from, you know, um, you know, say the principal or something like that. But, you know, a lot of students are having a lot of stress, and it is recommended for teachers to give students an extra two weeks to turn in assignments. But a lot of people are saying that they are, um, not experiencing that. And that, you know, teachers are having, you know, normal due dates. And, uh, again, last year, a lot of accommodations were given, and I think students are really grateful for those, and I think they really benefited the students and helped us sort of cope with some of the stress that they were dealing with. And this year, um, we basically have some of the same situation, but a lot less of the accommodations that were given. And, um, we think that that's something that could also be addressed. So test time is the last one. So there's also another recommended, um, recommended thing where, uh, teachers are supposed to give a little bit longer on tests. Um, one of the, another, this is another thing where students are having a problem actually seeing that kind of in school. Um, there's a lot, it's a lot more complicated to take a test online than it is to take one in person in that school. Because with tests comes a whole nother added layer of technology issues that students wouldn't always have to face when they're at school. I can tell you from personal experience, I've had some of my own troubles, you know, doing things like, you know, some teachers have you enter PDFs or take pictures and turn those in, and that just adds a whole nother layer of, you know, complicating factors. And with only a certain amount of time, that can be incredibly stressful for students, and that can, you know, sometimes even compromise students' grades and, you know, their performance in a class. So that's another thing. And again, I understand there's a lot of nuance to these sorts of things, but, you know, sometimes, well, I'd say a lot of students are feeling really stressed out, and, you know, some of these accommodations would be really helpful if students could actually, um, you know, sort of see them happening on the, on the ground. But that's, I think, all we had. And maybe if Doris wants to say anything on that last one, because I know it was a big one, if there's anything I missed.
Um, yeah, so it's just, I think we, the reason why we put that on there is just because, um, our peers, obviously, uh, have, we have a lot of feedback from our peers saying like, online school is way more stressful than in-person school because of just all those things that we have listed. Um, and I think that academics is obviously a big part of school and like since it's putting so much stress on students, um, if there is a possibility that, that can change, that would be great, but, um, as Alex said, we understand that, um, it's also difficult to change.
Thank you. Thank you for all that feedback, and that is exactly, you know, what we're hoping for with, um, with our meetings is that we hear that student voice. So thank you so much for sharing. Um, next on the agenda is public input, and this is an opportunity to, for the board to hear from the public about items that are not on the agenda for this evening. So I know we have a couple of people that are interested in providing public input. If you are, and it's then an item that is not on the agenda, please feel free to raise your hand. In order to do that, you go under participants. Click that open, and then down at the bottom of the list, you should see something where it says raise hand, um, and feel free to do that. So I have three people so far on my list, so we'll start with Freya Thorston. Um, please give your name, your attendance area, and, uh, because we've had mounds of the public input, we are limiting public input to two minutes. Oh, and I have to unmute you, and I will forget it almost every time.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Freya Thorston. I'm in the Cougar Ridge neighborhood. I have a son in high school and a son in middle school. I am a member of the Issaquah Dyslexia Partners, a parent group that was formed last year to improve support and interventions for students with dyslexia in our district. Um, I'm here tonight to just say a really big thank you to a lot of people. Um, thank you to our school board, to our PTSA Council President Erin Eaton, Director Rich Mellish, Executive Director Dana Bailey, and countless others in our district who are working really hard during a difficult time to make changes to turn things around regarding dyslexia. Um, our district still has a lot of work to do, um, to improve understanding and services and support for these students. Um, but I think we're headed in the right direction. And to our board, thank you for your recent Dyslexia Awareness Month proclamation. It may seem like just a little gesture, but to our families and students struggling with dyslexia, it means so, so much. Um, and I know you have your hands full, so I really just wanted to say thank you for your continued commitment to making things better for our students and families struggling with dyslexia. Um, and I also wanted the board to know how grateful our entire dyslexia parent community is for the hard work of two people. Dr. Dana Bailey, Executive Director of Special Services, and Rich Mellish, the Director of Teaching and Learning. They have been amazing partners with our parent group this year, and we are so thankful for their understanding and their partnership and their leadership on this issue. Um, thank you guys. And to our parent community out there and teachers, um, we have a Facebook group called Issaquah Dyslexia Discussion Group, and all are welcome to join. Um, thank you guys for all of your help this year.
Thank you. Uh, next I have Ethan L., and so Ethan, you'll need to give your full name, and I will ask you to unmute. Hopefully that worked. And it's not even Ethan.
And it's not even Ethan. I am so sorry. I could not rename myself. Um, hi, my name is Nikki Panas-Lavie. Um, my son attends Sunset Elementary.
Oh, and you turned your camera off. Sorry. There you are.
Okay. Is it on again?
Oh, that might be the thing where I can't reach to undo it, and Stephen will have to undo that to allow you to show. Anyway, go ahead with your public input.
Okay. Is it working now?
No, but that's fine. There you are.
All right. Um, okay. Uh, so my name is Nikki Panas-Lavie. I'm not Ethan. Um, my son attends Sunset Elementary, and my daughter attends Issaquah High School. I wanted to thank the board for declaring December, uh, October Dyslexia Awareness Month, uh, for the second year running. Um, I also wanted to thank Dr. Donna Bailey and Rich Mellish for the commitment over the past years to work with our group and to help support students with dyslexia. Tonight, I hope to express my concern regarding the adoption of a new curriculum next year. Our current whole language and level literacy has failed not only our students with special needs, but all of Issaquah's students as represented by our low literacy and writing scores. It is helpful to reflect back to the Dyslexia Forum that showed that students within our district were unable to find the help and remediation within the district and had nearly all sought help privately. This creates an enormous equity issue and a failure by our district to meet the needs of at least one out of five of our students. Children identified with dyslexia after the second grade struggle and rarely catch up to their counterparts. Meanwhile, students identified earlier and provided with a program that focuses on phonological awareness, become skilled readers, and are able to read on par with their same age cohort by middle school. Our reading curriculum serves all students, not just some, and by embracing structured literacy based on the science of reading, we can help all our students become better readers and writers. I implore the district to embrace a new curriculum such as Really Great Reading or the Hagerty Approach that embraces the science of reading and structured literacy. Finally, because so many students have suffered from the lack of proper intervention, I would ask there to be a technology stopgap put in place for our current students with dyslexia to help them as we navigate distant learning. Learning Ally allows students to eerreread everything from textbooks to novels and would be a critical step that would help to level the playing field for all students to succeed, as we learned remotely. Increasingly, our work has become based on reading and writing only. And I cannot begin to express how painful this is for our students with dyslexia. It is time for our district to embrace the science of technology that points us to what has been proven to help all students.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for your input. We appreciate it. And next I have Melinda Gage.
Hi there.
Hello.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, my name is Melinda Gage. Uh, I have a student at Creekside and at Pine Lake Middle School, and I'm also a member of the Issaquah Dyslexia Partners along with Freya and Nikki. Um, I want to say a big thank you to the Issaquah School Board. Um, thank you for proclaiming October as Dyslexia Awareness Month for the second year in a row. I also want to thank the Creekside PTSA Board, who are in the process of passing a similar resolution. Uh, proclamations like this are influential first steps that help raise awareness and begin to offer support to kids with dyslexia and their families in our district. Compared to last year at this time, Issaquah School District has made two dyslexia awareness proclamations, has a new dyslexia webpage, about to hold the second Dyslexia Forum, uh, and on the verge of making necessary curriculum changes. Go ISD! So I want to thank Dr. Bailey, um, Executive Director of Special Services, and, uh, Rich Mellish, Director of Teaching and Learning, for continuing to work with us. Um, this is a partnership that we are very grateful for, and it helps improves our schools. Uh, Dr. Bailey and Rich Mellish, thank you for your continued, uh, commitment to students with dyslexia and dysgraphia. I am glad the district is hosting the upcoming Dyslexia Family and Staff Engagement Forum on November tenth. With everything that is going on with the coronavirus and distance learning, I'm really grateful that the forum is, is happening as planned. Um, it's important to me because my kids still have dyslexia. They are maneuvering these hard times with the added difficulty of having a learning disability. Um, distance learning is challenging for all of us, but we do need to recognize that kids with dyslexia are losing valuable instruction time, and it's going to be much harder for them to catch up and close the gap. Uh, the new dyslexia law takes effect next fall. Our lawmakers specified and included that schools must provide evidence-based structured literacy interventions because it is known based on the science of reading that structured literacy, that is explicit, systematic, and multimodal, uh, helps not only dyslexic readers but all readers. And this means that kids who struggle.
Two minutes, Melinda.
Oh, with decoding and kids, um, who can decode but struggle with comprehension benefit. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'm sorry, two minutes feels so short sometimes, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much to, um, those that, uh, spoke today, and we know that we still have a lot of work to do for dyslexia. Um, as we continue to do that work, thank you for your engagement, uh, with the board and with the public and with our staff. Um, it has hopefully provided some more meaning, and we do know, we still have more to do. And, um, I was a mom with a kid with dysgraphia, so it was pleasant for me to hear that. Um, after thirteen years of suffering through that with my student, finally graduating, it was, um, I, I feel that pain. So, um, thank you, thank you for your advocacy and for, um, the work that, again, I want to give a thanks to Dr. Bailey and, uh, Director Mellish for their hard work to get something implemented that's going to be effective for, um, our students with dyslexia and, um, all our students. So with that, I want to say thanks. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a meeting management tool that allows us to look at, um, regular items that, um, the board has already reviewed. Any item on the consent agenda can be pulled by a member of the board. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone would want to pull? Okay, so we'll seek a motion.
I move the consent agenda be approved as presented. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion is passed, so we have our consent agenda. Next is the establishment of the regular agenda. Are there any changes to the regular agenda?
Um, actually, yes. Um, I, I would like to add, uh, an executive session at the end of this meeting for approximately sixty minutes, even though I don't believe it will take that long. Um, I would like to dedicate, um, thirty minutes pursuant, uh, to RCW forty-two thirty-one forty relating to collective bargaining, and an additional thirty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten to consider a personnel matter. Um, the ISD, the, the board, I, some ISD administrators, and I would attend, um, the executive, it is an executive session not open to the public, and no action would be taken.
Great. Thank you. So we will, um, have that added to the end of our board meeting. Next on our agenda is a, um, review of our work study. So again, we had a work study from five-thirty until six-fifteen. So my apologies for the fifteen-minute delay, um, where we talked about both, um, an update on our facilities that are being, uh, that are under construction right now, and then a discussion about, uh, Boundary Review Committee. So wanted to find out if any board members wanted to share out any thoughts. Sydney.
Yeah, for me, it's just always helpful to get the, the broad overview of these processes. Obviously, this will be a significant step we'll go through. So it's just helpful to get the, the long view of how the committees get formed and how to work.
Director Moore?
Just that, you know, this will be a big undertaking, you know, doing this for the first time in a remote setting with a large committee and engaging all of the elementary and middle school principals and a community member from each school to really help us work through the boundary changes that will need to happen for our new middle school and elementary school. So definitely for people to be thinking about if they're interested in participating to engage with their building principal and be on the lookout for more information about this.
Director Gallinger?
My hope would be that, I understand because of the delayed construction project regarding the timing of opening of our elementaries, but that, keeping that in mind, that we would still develop a comprehensive plan for where we see the final state of our boundaries are and then have a second part is the transition plan as the buildings come online rather than to have our community have to go through two separate boundary changes, especially at Sammamish.
Anyone else? Okay, so the district will be providing more information out through the, through the schools, if I'm correct, through the school principals?
Yes, we will. There'll be an application process that we, our principals will push out for a parent rep for each. Just to give a sense of the timeframe, we're looking to start the committee in November, complete that work in early February, and there would, there will be some community forum time built into that as well. So we'd like to be able to give, you know, the community about eight months of advanced notice of what those boundaries will be. And then, of course, that time starting really, really hard in the new year, the new calendar year, we'll have named planning principles for each of those schools. They'll, they'll begin the work of identifying a core team for the building and that the core team is what will make recommendations to the school board for the naming of the schools and the selection of mascots and so forth. So just to give folks kind of a sense of what the time would be, there will be a time commitment on the part of committee members and this all will be in the charter information or the application information as well. But you're probably looking at, you know, 10 to 12-hour plus commitment. But it's important work and we look forward to getting started with it and just thankful to everybody because this will be about a 40-plus person committee with another half dozen or more on the technical team. So they, we will be wrangling a fairly big group through this process, but I believe Dr. Almay mentioned, you know, we've had some experience with that. Obviously, the board has experience with it, doing your board meetings this way and with our dyslexia work group that we've been doing. So I'm confident that we can make this work. It's not ideal, but we need to get those boundaries built. It's exciting. We're going to have two new schools coming online and it's going to help us certainly with some of our crowding issues and looking forward to getting that process kicked off.
Great. So any other comments before we move on? Okay, next item on our agenda is a COVID-19 impact on school operations. Just to go through the cadence of what we'll be doing is we'll be hearing from staff on any updates they want to give. We'll give a time for public comment. Again, we'll do two minutes per person and with a limit of no more than an hour's worth of comment time. And then we'll move to a board discussion and questions. So Superintendent Thilio, kick it off to you.
Great, thank you, President Meraldo. The main thing that I wanted to make sure and let our community know about this update on the impact of our mitigation efforts of COVID-19 was that if you haven't had a chance, we, some of the staff and I recorded about an hour-long video message yesterday. It's on our YouTube channel where we go over a lot of the, you know, we've had a lot of questions that have come in in the recent weeks and we try to address all of those or at least update our FAQ page as well to make sure that it has updated information. One of the nice things about the, the video recording that we dropped last night, I believe at 7:00 PM, is that it is also timestamped so that if there's a specific thing that you wanted to watch, you can look at the bottom of the video and say, oh, I can go to this time in the video and that's where they talk about personal protective equipment or something like that. Because it's a fairly long video, a lot of talking, a lot of detail. I hope people who watch it can appreciate all of the detailed planning that is going on in order to, again, mitigate the impact that the virus is having on our school system. I have to give a big thanks to my staff who have been doing that work. You know, our normal work has continued as well. You know, the dyslexia work that we've been doing, our multi-tiered system of support work that we're doing, our teachers are still participating in online book studies while they're all learning how to teach in a virtual setting and, and my staff is doing all of that and they've also been working a lot in negotiations with our various labor groups to problem solve some of these issues collectively. So I just really appreciate the effort that everybody is putting in and I know it is a tough time, but I would encourage folks not only to go to that video, but to also, if you have questions, go to the FAQ page. We've also put updated links to all of the important documents that we are using to guide some of our decision-making, the Washington State Public Health Decision Tree, the updated version of that decision tree, the data dashboards from Seattle, King County Public Health, and the toolkit. Those are all fairly detailed documents, but I know some people really like to go in and read the details. So that's all there as well. And then, of course, other answers to questions that have come in are in the FAQ. So, and we will continue to provide updates via e-news messages and through video updates from time to time. We also try to push all these things out through our social media sites as well. So again, big thanks to the staff for, for all the work they did. The work in doing the video was one thing, the work in figuring out all the answers was a whole nother thing. And, and that work continues. And I would also remind folks that once you think you have an answer to something, that's not, then something could change out there. Guidance has changed several times and so it is kind of a fluid environment. So I guess I would just give a disclaimer to everything we say that in, in the world of COVID-19, you have to be kind of flexible and, and be willing to adjust as the, either the data about the virus changes or the guidance changes as well. So, but again, we will continue to push out as much information as we can and it, people ask some great questions out there. We try to address everything from HVAC systems to hand sanitizing to curricular and instructional questions that come up as well. I did want to give a shout out to, to our Teaching and Learning Services and our Special Services Department, our CTE Department, our Student Interventions. They're all doing work to try to better support our teachers and our students in this virtual way. And, and we, you know, we're, we're learning about it every day, how we can do it. I was thrilled to hear our students talk about kind of putting the, the mental health counselor out there to make more students aware that that service is available. Although I will tell you, all of our mental health counselors in, in all of our schools have very busy schedules. Director Meraldo knows that issue was a facilitator representation we recently did about mental health services and, and how we support our students. We did that presentation through the YMCA of Sammamish. And big thanks to Director Ridenhour and our Student Interventions teams because they did a wonderful job with that presentation. So those departments continue to work and, and you know, their work is very different. You know, TLS has had to shift and, you know, we've had to put a big emphasis on helping teachers better understand how they might teach in a remote setting because it's very different than what you might be used to in your brick and mortar setting. So just kudos to everybody and certainly kudos to those teachers who have, who have embraced this challenge, you know, that's been hoisted upon all of us. And to that too, I also just again, wanted to give a thanks. I had the opportunity to visit some virtual classrooms. I've got more visits on my schedule. I know the board might be interested in some of that as well. So certainly if you are, let me know. I know Director Gallinger had mentioned he would be interested. Basically, what I do is I try to work with the building principal to reach out to some teachers because you know, you got to have that, that link to get in there. And you want to let them know because frankly, they just don't want to see strangers showing up in classrooms. So, but if you have an interest in doing that, it's fascinating. I, I also heard the student input about the cameras and I'm glad they shared that input with us because the right people were here to hear that tonight, Deputy Superintendent Almay and Executive Director Hood and so forth. Having said that, I mean, we, it does need to be optional. I would like to encourage students to turn their camera on, at least for part of their class sessions. And the only reason I say that is because I've actually heard from students that that's something that many of them like in terms of it makes them feel more of a connection. And I know we're all trying to find ways to make connections with each other. But I also completely understand a concern that a student might have about not, you know, you, I would encourage people to use a backdrop like I am tonight, a digital backdrop that, you know, I happen to be in my office right now, but I get that for some, it seems strange to be showing the insides of our homes and so forth. But, you know, I just had noticed that in the beginning of the school year, I was getting reports that most of the students had their cameras on most of the time, but as time has gone on, that's happened less and less. So it's just an observation. Again, I don't, I'm not trying to put pressure on anybody. I just, I want everybody to try to help one another feel connected and feel good about this, as good as we can anyway, about a virtual experience. So I appreciated that input from our students. I wanted to talk too about, I, I know that Deputy Superintendent Dr. Almay and our high school team and Executive Director Hood, they'll be working with our high school principals to do kind of a check-in on how things are going and doing a survey of students, staff, and families at the high school level, looking at the, the schedule. I know we've heard some concerns particularly from the Liberty Community, but I think from Issaquah High and Skyline maybe as well about looking at the schedule and is that configuration of the schedule working well for students and workload issues and, and homework issues and things like that are, are being considered as well as we all learn and try to figure out what it's like to, to exist in a virtual learning world. And then I know we've, to, one, I want to talk a little bit and ask Director, Executive Director Hood to talk a little bit about high school athletics, but there was one other statement that I, I wanted to share. And that is, I think, you know, I've made it very clear, my, my preference is for in-person instruction, but I also believe and recognize that we have to mitigate the virus to, to a reasonable extent for sure. I want to keep people healthy and, and so we need to do that and I recognize that. But, and I read a tremendous amount, as much as I can find, as, as a layperson, I'm not an epidemiologist and, and, but I'm trying to understand this. And I've been encouraged by some recent articles that have come out about what I believe are some reputable new sources. One is Public Health Center of Harvard, related to now that we've had students in school in a lot of states and around the country and frankly, around the world, there's a lot of research being done. So what is the impact as it relates to the spread of the virus in communities that are doing that? And there seems to be at least in some of these studies, some early indicators that having students in person in school in a mitigated fashion, like we're talking about, hybrid, small groups and all of that, doesn't seem to have the impact on causing the, the increases in the virus that some had thought that it may have. So I'm somewhat encouraged by that. I recognize there's all kinds of studies that are saying all kinds of things, but a few members in the community and even on the teaching staff have forwarded these to me. I thank you for that. I'm out there looking for information as well, but I am encouraged by that. So appreciate that and just want people to know, we are constantly watching the data, following our regional data, our local data, and also trying to continually educate ourselves on what is kind of the up-to-date thinking as it relates to virus mitigation and, and how we should do that and the impact that it may have on the community. I know that we also, and we gave a brief, about a nine or 10-minute segment Executive Director Hood did last night in, in the video related to kind of where we're at right now with high school athletics and clubs and activities. And I want to be clear, when we don't just talk about athletics, we talk, talk about clubs and activities as well. And, but I thought I might give her an opportunity to share. I know we're kind of waiting to hear if WIA's got more to say. I thought it might be also good to hear kind of what our Kinko League partners are talking about and just, and I see Executive Director Hood's camera just came on and Donna, maybe if you could just kind of provide an update to the board and the community a little bit. I know you spoke to this last night, but if there's anything more that you might be able to share with us, that would be much appreciated. And I think, Marnie, do we have to unmute Executive Director Hood?
That should work. I clicked the unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. So there are a couple of things that we've been really watching and monitoring as we've been assessing the lay of the land here. Of course, the decision tree from the Department of Health and OSPI still strongly recommends that we cancel all in-person extracurriculars until and unless we are under that 75 cases per 100,000. So we are holding to that decision tree. I am meeting with my Kinko colleagues and several of them also attend the WIAA meetings. One is a former member and I believe we have one rep that attends anyway as a regular matter. And we were hoping that we were going to get some more information from them as they met again this week, but we didn't. So they may be holding off until their November meeting before they drop any additional decisions. There's some possibility that they may look at reshuffling season two, three, and four sports based on risk of each sport. I'm, I'm not certain that that's a thing, but that's what I'm hearing rumblings about. So that's possible. And if y'all remember, the season two, the new season two starts on December 28th. They also took the out-of-season time that we're in right now, what we used to experience in summer, and they extended that to December 19th. So while we wait, we remain hopeful that the case counts are going to come down. And as we sit and wait, we are looking at the guidance and still creating site-specific safety plans for how we might implement some small in-person conditioning. Again, these would be very small groups, five students, one staff in pods is what they're calling them. And this really is aligned to the National Federation of High School guidance that is also being looked at by OSPI, DOH, and WIAA. So it's alphabet soup here, as you can tell. But again, the decision tree is really the, the prime document that we're monitoring to know when we can start. And then we'll look at the others as to how, they really spell out the how of athletics. And it would start with small in-person conditioning and move from there possibly into some skills training. And then as Dr. Gallinger had asked previously, into some intramurals. At this point, I really cannot predict when or if competition would resume. It's just really hard to tell. It, it depends so much on case rates. And of course, the ability to contact trace is, is really important. So we would have to look and see how much interaction would we want with other schools. I know non-league is kind of just off the table right now. They're just not scheduling non-league games because it felt like silly to do and then have to reschedule potentially. So they could be added, but that's not where we plan to start.
Thank you, Donna, and I appreciate the clarity. As I look at the decision tree right now under extracurricular, the fact that what, I just want the public to know, even if we are able to do some of those things, it's not going to be practiced. It's kind of like when I say, when we bring students back into school, it's not going to be school as you knew it back prior pandemic.
Not right away, at least.
Yeah.
And I think the one peculiarity I should mention here too, I think, is really challenging. There's, at least, it is, it feels like it right now because we haven't done it yet. Everything that we're doing is, feels brand new and that's fine. But we have to really think through carefully how we would clean equipment of any kind. And thankfully, the National Federation of High Schools has really given some good guidance around that and how to take something that might otherwise be high-risk and- and how to take something that might otherwise be high-risk and reduce the risk. So there there are some real specifics there that we want to make sure we get right. And cleaning equipment would have to be involved, for sure. So to start with in-person conditioning gives us more time to figure out how to do all of that. And I haven't fully started all of those conversations for some of our more complicated equipment with Mr. Turney in his office, but I will as the time comes.
Well, and I guess I would just add too, one is I've contemplated this and I think about bringing robotics groups back together or volleyball group teams back together or portions of them, I should say. I I do worry about transportation. And so the joke in education is, you know, transportation drives everything we do. Well, it kind of does. And while I recognize many of our high school students would be able to carpool or drive themselves, not all. And so I start to worry about equity issues related to particularly with younger students, freshmen and sophomore. So that's something we would need to think about. If we're going to start doing these things, we need, we need to, I'm not saying we have to solve them right now here tonight, or these are all things that we need to think about. And of course, you heard the tremendous detail we went through last night, how important it is for us as an organization to try to do everything we can to mitigate the spread of the virus, even while we try to open up more opportunities for students and staff and community members. So because we got to be healthy.
I have to give a shout out to our activity coordinators here too, who are really doing an incredible job, thinking outside the box and helping club advisors with virtual activities and figuring out which virtual events kids can attend that have been sort of modified and adjusted. And lots of our national organizations are getting very creative too. So there will be some virtual things kids can attend that they're even planning for now. So I'm I'm pretty excited about the club work that's that's been happening and I'm sure will continue to grow.
I I appreciate that and certainly give my thanks to everybody who's doing the work in this area as well.
Will do.
And so and I know the last thing I was going to speak to President Muraldo and then open it up for public input and questions from the board. And again, it goes back to my concerns that I have about the impacts of isolation on our students or the the inability of our students to socialize in a way they normally would. And and let me just say too, even for our 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 students who, you know, the clubs and activities, because I've received emails saying, why are you even talking about sports when you can't get get the schools? You can't even get the first graders in in school. Well, because it matters. It it does matter. There are two different types of activities. And I I just think, you know, my heart breaks for these young people who are missing so many of the opportunities. I I spend a lot of time thinking about them and about what this virus is doing and what what will help them and what could we do? And, you know, it's it's heartbreaking again, you know, because if you are 16 or 17 years old, you're losing experiences that I I can't bring back. I am honestly thinking to myself at times that this is an opportunity for for our our students, our children to really build build skills of resiliency and flexibility. And, you know, it sounds kind of crazy, but maybe this is how great generations are formed. They they are tested and then they make it through these tests and great things happen going forward. And I I as an eternal optimist and somebody full of hope, I believe that will happen. But in the meantime, I recognize the pain that many people are feeling. And to that end, I wanted to just touch right back on what we were saying and speaking to earlier and the the mental health presentation that that we gave as a staff the other night. Just, I've got this opportunity to remind people, we do have mental health counselors. If if we have wonderful guidance counselors as well. If your child is experiencing a problem, please do reach out either through the counselor at your school, through the administrator. They do tele tele help sessions and take advantage of that resource that is out there for you because, you know, there there's no shame in in feeling depressed or anxious right now during the times we're living in and trying to do your schoolwork and and keep it all together. And I know that can be hard. So we do have resources out there for you. I appreciate that our PBS ES coaches and counselors are pushing things out through their the schools' websites and everything. But sometimes you may need to just pick up the phone and talk to somebody as well. And so please do take advantage of those services. And other than that, President Muraldo, again, we said a lot last night in that video. We tried to cover a lot of a lot of ground. So I think I'll I'll kind of pause now. And I'm here and staff is here for questions from the board and and public input as well.
Okay, so we'll move to public input. And I did, again, I want to remember, remind people that we'll need your full name and attendance area, like what area of the district your student is going to school or what area you reside, like what nearby school. I also want to remind the public that this is public input and it's not output. So you will be speaking to the board, but it's not a question and answer time. So it's a time for you to share your thoughts with the board. But it is likely that we don't respond. If you see us looking away, well, part of it is now with cameras. It might look weird. We might be looking at you and you doesn't look like it. Or we might be looking to type because we do take copious notes during this time. So with that, I have two people with their hands raised. So I will start with Dina and I will ask you to unmute so you should be able to.
Okay, I'm muted, I'm starting my video.
Great, thank you.
Let's see, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, let me get my, so I am, I have students at Maywood and Liberty. I've also had students in ISD for 13 years and have participated at all levels. I want to start with my opinion that everything we just heard from Executive Director Hood there's no resemblance to the actual guidelines that have been put in place by the WIA that governs athletic participation in Washington. It's purely the school district's unilateral interpretation of the current WIA guidelines, which is inconsistent with the WIA statement regarding those guidelines and more importantly, the guidelines themselves. I really want to express plain note with the way the district has elected to handle athletics at this time. And I'm specifically discouraged by the school districts' unwillingness to engage in a meaningful dialogue with the very people that it's intended to serve, both the students and parents. I personally, on behalf of a group of athletes' parents, delivered a thoughtful letter outlining our concerns about the effects of lack of partic- participation athletics and was met with complete silence and denied the opportunity to engage in that meaningful dialogue. We're seeing our neighboring public and private schools bring their athletics back with success. As we watch students all around the country participate in widespread athletics, we're watching our students suffer. This is an outright dereliction of our duty as adults in their community. I'd like to redo my invitation to sit down across the table from anyone at ISD that would like to participate in meaningful discussions regarding bringing our athletes back in a safe way that would not take away from anything that the district is doing to help some of the other groups that they're coming back. Thank you, that's really all I wanted to say.
Great, thank you. Next, I have Carrie Kiefer.
Hello, I'm Carrie Kiefer. I have two students at Isaquah High School. And I just wanted to address the secondary students really quickly. So much information that's been coming out from the district lately has been regarding the elementary-age students and it's understandable. But I just want to sort of speak for them and advocate for them right now. I support and value the work that the teachers are putting into their jobs this year. However, this has not changed the fact that numerous parents are publicly expressing their preference that school students go back into the buildings. And they're 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 being met with quite a bit of backlash. The social media shaming, when you have an opinion that's different than the IEA's public stance, you're blasted as a teacher hater. And I just want teachers and the board and everybody to understand that these things are totally separate. It is possible to support your teachers and appreciate your teachers and still believe that there is a way to get these high school students specifically back into the classes. I would just like the board to kind of consider this stance for many, many teachers who don't feel like they can publicly put it out there just because of the backlash. For those parents who don't believe that being back in the classroom is safe, there is an option for you. And that is so lucky. However, for those many students where online learning is just detrimental, there are no options. I believe good grades are not a valid indicator of how online learning is working for students. There are so many kids who've figured out how to do the bare minimum. They're not learning deadlines because the teachers are giving them grace, which is appreciated. But at the same time, they're not learning how to meet a deadline. We know people who've actually are moving out of this district after it's had such strong schools for so long because they believe that their students are not getting a fully enriched education. I know that tweaks were made, but at the end of the day, this curriculum is not meant to be taught online. Our students are absolutely falling behind others throughout this country. And this stance of, you know, oh, we're all in this together and it's happening, everyone's in the same boat. It's just not the case anymore. And the high schoolers who are having to apologize, I'm sorry, apply to colleges, it's it's really going to impact them. So I plea, you know, we just don't, we want to make sure that the high school students aren't forgotten as we focus so much on these elementary-aged kids.
Great, thank you. Next, I have Craig Little. Let me un- ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. And Stephen, I can't give him permission to show his.
There you go.
There it is.
All right. Hi, my name is Craig Little. I have a first grader and third grader at Challenger Elementary School. I was going to take this time to really discuss how first grade started out well, but my daughter has been falling quite a ways behind. I appreciate there's a lot more teaching happening now than last spring, but there's just not been a lot of learning, I feel. And I think, as you guys know, and as you've heard from several other people, we really need to get our K1 students in the schools and in the schools now. I fear that, you know, my daughter's lucky because there's two parents that work at home. But I just fear that other kids aren't as lucky. And the longer we wait, the more damage we do to our kids. To that point, I was also studying the the return tree from the Governor's Department of Health. And on there, it doesn't say anywhere that you have to tie your return to the county that you live in, when in fact, it just says the community you live in. And upon research, I found that we're at 50 cases per 100,000 within the ISD school district. I'm not really sure what the disconnect is there, but I I would like to have that addressed as to why we've tied our kids returning to the activities and choices that are made by college students that you dub or a whole variety of people that live in King County, which is a county of two and a half million people. And that's about all I have. I'll give my time back.
Great, thank you, Mr. Little, appreciate your input. I see no other hand, so I'll do one last call for anyone who wants to provide public input. Okay, seeing none, I think there is another thing going on tonight that has a lot of people in the United States interested in attending instead of our board meeting. So I might speculate that is where many of our people are. So with that, I will open it up to board questions and comments regarding anything you heard today. I just want to say, while you guys are thinking about it then, that I was on the WASDA conference call today. And we heard from the new Executive Director of WIA. And from what he was saying, we have to look at the decision tree and what it says. And his advice was that was, that's the first place you go, that's where the, that's where the local control is. But he's like, as soon as you make those decisions, you know, you would want to contact your risk pool. And so I know this is not something a lot of the public wants to hear, but as the fiduciary managers of the district, we do have to look at that as well. And will our insurance cover us if we were to open up athletics when the guidance strongly recommends that you do not have them at this time? I and I, that to me is is a is a substantial portion of, I think, what we do, but how we do it safely. So that's one piece. And then the other piece is they try to align their their guidance much more in line with with what the governor has. And so I think, I think it's taking those guidelines into consideration. So I would be interested in finding out from staff, are they different than what we're doing? Are we doing things that are outside that those guidelines?
But Marnie, the guidelines say about, talks about organized activity and and sports as far as, you know, where the WIA document has linked, sort of what are the high, moderate and low-risk ones? It still says in the high-risk ones that you could do these small pods of conditioning. I mean, the point isn't about conditioning for football in the spring, at least in my mind. The point is about creating networks for kids so they have an opportunity for their developmentally appropriate socialization and social emotional health and wellness to carry them through this year. And so that's the part where I think that we're failing our students. I don't think that any of us are saying, gosh, you know, we need to start practicing in order to play sports and, you know, to the nuances of where it's league versus non-league play. I don't think that that's really the the point. The point is, in the high category, we could still be working with groups of students. And if our teachers and staff don't want to do it, then we need to open it up for our community members who want to do this. Like our district funds very rich stipends for people. And I think frankly, that people would do it volunteering because they care that much about kids in our community. But there is no reason we should be paying those stipends to any staff member if we're not actually doing those activities. Let's open it up for our community to do because this isn't an either-or thing for our youngest learners getting in classrooms and our oldest students not. Like, we have to serve them in the ways that we can. So that's what I would say as far as that clarification, at least my interpretation of the decision tree and frame for people with WIA.
And and I would add that if if that is the case and we can be opening up, you know, small pods of, when it, we keep referring to it as like conditioning because that is all around sports. If there is going to be that opportunity, then there can be small pods around clubs and activities that could also gather and do the whatever that helps their organization. So I just want to make sure we're really clear that it's not just the athletic groups, but the clubs and activities also have the same opportunities.
And great point, yes, thank you. I agree, wholeheartedly.
Sydney, you look like you're mulling over something.
Um, that's so funny. I used to write a blog called Mulling It Over. Yeah, I guess my question is, are, I have, I haven't looked at Parks and Rec or any of the other local services and any of the municipalities we're in. So do we know that now? Have we reopened for, you know, group activity? I'll say it that way, in in the other public establishments?
Uh, yes, for the past two weekends, my kids have had soccer games, both.
Soccer with with a with a public organization or private? Because my kids have been playing sports the whole, have been training for months. So I'm, that's what I don't understand the difference.
Well, I mean, they're actually playing games versus just, I've seen anymore, so.
No, they train in condition, but they're doing that in a private organization. I'm asking about any of our local municipalities. So Parks and Rec or other public organizations, have they reopened for these small groups?
Well, I guess somebody says, so for soccer, for example, there isn't like, there isn't like a Parks and Rec soccer, like that's run by Isquah Soccer Club and that's who does soccer in the fall, for example. And they're running soccer, like they, it's different soccer, but they're running soccer.
Yeah, because I I do think there's a difference, right? I mean, private organizations still have gyms open. Municipalities and and public organizations is slightly different. That's what I was pondering. So Isaquah Parks and Rec is an example, runs basketball, they run other sports. And so I would be just curious to understand what is happening in those, in the in those organizations because it's, it is a very different thing. Public, public and private organizations are are different and are treated different. But certainly, but I mean, I'm I'm a whole, I have two athletes. I'm a wholehearted supporter of having. I'm a wholehearted supporter of having, as much as we can, of having that connection made. I don't think it's about necessarily competing because that's a whole different category. But the, the loss of community connection, even focus, I think, is really important of individual skill building, I think would be amazing. I'm just, you know, it's just so many moving parts. And frankly, I think it's easy to quote one set of regulations or guidance versus another. They all conflict and we need to be super clear about that. We don't have a crisp set of guidance from the various sets of agencies that we look at. So it is not clear that we're on one side or another. We just have to figure out what's our philosophy.
And the point of why they reissued the guidance on October 16th was to try and provide that alignment between K-12 and what community sports were doing. And that's, that was their point of it. Their next one, next week is supposed to actually provide clarification that we've been pleading with them as far as what younger learners need. But while we're having this poor dialogue, I would really like the superintendent to go and review his comments on his YouTube, starting at 2 minutes 44 seconds through 2 minutes and 52 seconds, because I'm going to have a specific question about the comments of the introduction comments that our superintendent made then.
So to be clear, Director Gallager, did you want me to comment on that now? You said to review my comments. Did you want me to literally go to the tape now or?
That would be my recommendation unless you have them by memory to know what I, because I'm going to, I'm going to ask you a specific question about what you said.
Well, I don't have, I think I know pretty well what I said, but you know, I could certainly, maybe if you ask your question, I'll, I'll see if, if my memory, if I, see if I get it right or not.
So I think I have, I have a question and a concern. And it's that based on your comments, where you say that based on our current numbers that we shouldn't, we don't foresee having students in our buildings? I have very significant concerns about that.
Students in our buildings ever? Or so just.
Anytime soon.
I would go listen to your comments.
Yeah, okay. I will do that, that, because that my.
Clarification might be helpful here because in it, it's, I was like, wow. I was a little surprised because that was different than everything that I'd heard from internal conversations that we've been having. So.
Well, Ron, let me chime in for just a quick second. I agree, Harlan. I kind of caught the same thing in the thing that was said last night. However, what Ron said at the PTA meeting today was much more, we're working right now to get those kids back into school. I'll let Ron finish addressing it, but you're, just the way the comment went last night that was in the YouTube, made it sound like we didn't think we were going to get kids in. And that's the way I walked away last night after listening to it. But when I listened to you at the PTA meeting today, it was much more hopeful and we're still working on it and we're going to get those kids in.
Well, just to be clear, we are working on it. The guidance to my team and, and in a direct conversation I've had with the IEA president, we are continuing to do all the work we need to do to be ready to go. I thought what I had communicated was that, given the current numbers, I believe I didn't check them today, or they hadn't changed when I checked earlier. We were at 94. We were still in the high risk category. And I said that we've got some work to do before we're going to get the numbers down to. And I did not, I believe I did not say a specific number or a specific time. As I told the PTSA today, I genuinely am trying to thread a needle here between knowing that right now we're in the midst of an uptick in cases. We've moved out of moderate into the high risk based on the, the decision tree. And that, that, that makes it more challenging for us frankly. But that, what I was very careful not to say was that we had to be to a specific number because I don't know what that number would be. I'm actually hopeful for the clarification and requested the clarification on the decision tree about youngest learners. Because when you ask, because the problem isn't even so much the term youngest learners. It's in the moderate range when they say, starting with elementary. Because when you ask an educator like myself what elementary is, I say kindergarten to fifth grade. And so my clarity that I need is when you say youngest learners, what do you mean? I'm hearing that there may be a belief that what they mean is pre-K to grade three. That's, that's, that's an important distinction for us to have. Because what that tells me is, you know, we're not saying you need to be in a moderate range to bring those kids back or not. I actually believe we could bring, if you listen to what Assistant Superintendent Bongard shared and what Assistant Superintendent Heckman said, and Mr. Turney, Executive Director, I believe if with that level of mitigation that we're talking about, small class numbers, attestations, mask wearing, all the cleaning and sanitizing, we can safely bring those kids back in. Not, not, there's still risk. There's always risk. There's risk before there was COVID. But what I was trying to communicate was, right now, the numbers are high. We're in an uptick and that does create new challenges. If not challenges, even within the decision tree, within the minds of the people that I need to come back and serve our children in purpose, in, in, in person. So I was a little more direct when I referred to secondary students. There I did say that it is very unlikely that we would have those students back in for any in-person prior to the end of this semester, which ends in late January. I, so as we continue to work and build the class list, build the bus schedules, get an MOU in place with our, our teachers' union, have the schedule all figured out. I want to have everything in place, ready to go. If we see, I believe we will have to see some kind of a flattening out or declining of these numbers. If they continue to go up, it just makes it harder and harder to, to, to take that and get everybody in consensus. It's time to go. Let's bring the kids back in. But I know people are working on it. And frankly, I know that teachers want in-person instruction. I mean, board has received emails from teachers too, saying that that's what, that they would like to see. But I know we've got to do it the right way. So I apologize if I, it was not my intent to confuse people. I will admit, I'm trying to thread a needle. I did not put another date out. I did not say that it can only happen under any specific circumstances. And so maybe my hedging with some of my language has just created confusion. I still believe we can get students in. We, we, we have to be prepared and we have to do it in a, in the right way, in a smart way. But it also has to be done in collaboration with the employees who are going to be serving those students in person as well. It's not something where I can just mandate it. And so that's what I was trying to do, Dr. Gallager. I was trying to articulate the fact that I'm not, I'm not ignoring the fact that we went from King County being at 51 cases per 100,000 up to 94 cases per 100,000 since the end of September. I'm not, you know, I've been accused of trying to deny that reality. I'm not. I see what's happening. And, you know, frankly, I've actually spoken to what the gentleman who gave public input said earlier. We do look at King County. A large reason for that is because I have staff that come and work in our schools from all over the county. They don't all live here just in Issaquah, because I'm aware, I look at the numbers by zip code. And I know our numbers, and particularly in this part of East King County, have continued to be quite good when compared to the rest of the county. So I don't know. That's what I was trying to communicate. We are moving forward and planning. We want to have everything in place. It is, and I know it's, and I also said it's going to be difficult because I also listened to public health and they're saying, as we get into the colder weather and we move indoors, that can be problematic. We're also heading into cold and flu season. And then the other thing that I'm hearing about is that frankly, and a speculation, I guess, as to what's driving our numbers somewhat right now, people are getting fatigue. COVID fatigue is the way it was phrased. They're wanting to get together. They're wanting to be around their other family members or close friends. And as a result, it's those house party types of events that seem to be driving a lot of the increase in the virus. That's also why I referenced those studies. Because I think a lot of people make an assumption, if you open up the schools, it's going to drive up your numbers of COVID. And I would argue, and some of the studies are now, would support that, that that doesn't have to be the case if it's done right. And I want to be clear, I have never said we should throw the doors open, roll the buses and bring every kid back in. I continue to talk about small groups of students in a COVID mitigated manner. So I don't know if that's helpful or if I'm just sowing more confusion or not. But that's, that's my position. And there it is.
I think it's more confusion. I would still encourage you to go listen to that sometimes.
Well, I apologize if I have sowed confusion because that's not what I want to do. I want, so I will do that, Director Gallager. And if need be, I'll, I can put out clarifying statements.
I think for me, like when I hear the comments that you just said, even just now, about we're in the high range, I think that we all need to appreciate, because then you then talk about the studies that say, well, you know, X, Y, Z could happen or not happen based on these levels. I would first say that these numbers of 25, 50, 75 are all arbitrary and artificial that are not at all evidence-based. And so they're all nice round numbers. I think where we need to ground ourselves is, is do we believe by placing kindergartners and first graders in buildings that we will contribute to the spread of COVID? And if the answer of that is no, then it doesn't matter whether the number is 51, 91, or 101. If we don't believe that bringing kindergartners and first graders is going to contribute to the spread of COVID, then, then that's what should be the anchoring part of the work that we do. And, and, and that's what I think is getting lost in this, is I think that people all across our state and community are getting tied to these numbers. But really, it's what is the risk? And if we don't believe that we're contributing to increased risk, we need to be getting our kindergartners and first graders, because I can certainly tell you we're contributing to the loss of learning by not. And what I think that people don't understand, and maybe construed my comments from a month ago about reading, is that at our best of times as a district, and we're a, you know, top tier district, at the best of times by third grade, we have 25% of our students district-wide who aren't meeting the competence level for reading that the state has. So what I worry about and why do people forget, because it's a long, described and so on. So if we had a kindergartner last year, so they missed their spring of their kindergarten year. They could potentially miss all of their first grade year and part of their second grade year. The impact to that learner is not insignificant. And then in their third grade year, they're going to test to be, see where are you at from a reading level? And I'm not worried about the parents that have one or two parents that household can help their kids with this. Those kids are probably doing okay, thriving, maybe not, but okay. What about the kids who don't have that opportunity? And that's not an insignificant number. And that's what we're all fighting for. We're not here fighting for the ones that the parents can come and speak at our board meetings. I appreciate hearing the input, but it's the what we're not hearing from and for the parents who can't come and do that, because those kids don't matter too. And so we're potentially talking three academic years that are being impacted by this. So I can certainly tell you what the loss is going to be. But I think we need to anchor ourselves. And if we don't believe that K-1 is going to impact COVID transmission to our students, teachers or community, then we need to move forward. And that's where I think that we're missing the point and focusing on levels and thresholds. And that's what the, what is, or what's happening in other school districts? Because that should be irrelevant. I don't really care what's happening in the Tahoma School District or the Seattle School District or the Bellevue School District. If I cared about that, I'd live in one of those school districts. And I would suspect the same is for most of our community. They chose to live here for a reason. And so they expect things to be here to serve their kids and their families.
Harlan, maybe you would know this, but you know, I'm looking on the CDC when it comes to like travel notices and what they consider high risk, moderate risk and low risk. And high risk for them is 500, 500 new cases or, so I just, I don't know. I don't know where we came up with this number of, oh, we're at 70 or we're at 90 per 100,000. Where does that come from? Or is it arbitrary and capricious? And we're just, we, because I think the data shows that we're one of the strictest states in the nation.
We are. I mean, the point, Marnie, is that the number is artificial. That there is, there's some, some evidence for the 25 part, that, that part's there. And certainly the 5% positivity rate, fully supported in the evidence. But you see our state as running roughly in the, the 2.8% positive, and we have been. And so what I would say though, is that if we were ever find ourselves in a condition like Wisconsin currently is, I would never advocate for any building to be open right now. I think when you're in that high rate spread, which like Marnie, as you said, is a threshold like approaching 500, that we would do everything we could to just send a message on it's best to just shelter in place. But we're not that. If you look at our overall from the time zero of when this started, there are only six states out of 50 who have a, have a lower per capita case rate than Washington. And then you hear like, oh, it's increasing in the state of Washington. If you look at over the past 14 days, there are only seven states who have a lower per capita spread in the past 14 days in Washington. So I think that we can get tied up in the numbers and the, and the increase in numbers that don't necessarily create statistical significance in whether or not opening our kindergartner and first grade classrooms would actually contribute to that increase.
Director Mullings.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an interesting conversation. Here, here's the dilemma for me. So certainly I support having kids back in school. I feel strongly about that. I think there was a comment made earlier that really resonates with me. And I've heard it before about the amount of teaching versus learning, right? I think our teachers are doing an amazing job. I get to sit in a couple of virtual classrooms every day. So I, I, I see what they're doing. I see the effort they're putting in. My question becomes, what does that translate into learning? So I'm deeply interested in how can we put forth a planful approach that returns kids to school, starting with our youngest, moving to our oldest? I'm, I'm fully on, on board with that. For me, it's more about the plan, right? How do, how do we get there? Critical, very critical for me was, can we be really crisp about what protocols are we taking in the buildings? So that we can establish a sense of clarity, a sense of trust, a sense of what, you know, predictability of what will happen inside the building, fully on board. Where this, where this conversation is, I have some dissonance though, is this idea that the numbers are, that we should, we should not be looking at the numbers that are made available to us in the state that we live in. And I get uncomfortable, yes, other states are using less strict protocols. But we're in this state and these are the protocols we have from our own Department of Health. So I struggle with the concept that we would not at least leverage those in way of saying, even in the high, it says youngest learners, as I read it, youngest learners should be back in school. So to me, we're in high, youngest learners should be back in school. I'm comfortable with that very clearly, along with all the protocols that we've been able to produce, the handbook of all of that. But to say that the numbers are arbitrary, for me, gives me, gives me dissonance. I'd rather say, in the state we live, based on the guidance we have from the public health we have, we, in, in the high, our youngest learners should be back in school. Again, I'm a person who believes in following the protocols, but have also worried deeply about the lack of connection. I worry deeply about the lack of learning, even with all of the great teaching that's, that's happening. So I guess for me, all that argument worked, all of that worked for me until the idea of saying, well, but these aren't the numbers we, we should follow. I think they, I personally think we should follow the numbers we have. But those same numbers also say it's K-1 can be back in school. So.
I want to correct that I wasn't saying that we shouldn't follow those numbers. I'm just wanting, there is so much angst and fear that has been pushed out to our community. And I want to say. And I want to say that a lot of that is based on, based on reality. I'm not saying that this doesn't exist. I'm just saying that we have really tightened down what that is. And so, you know, that, because people think that, we've gotten the email saying that even at high risk with our littlest learners, we're trying to kill teachers. So to that is what I'm speaking, like, that's an irrational fear. That is not what this board is talking about. And, you know, I mean, I do feel for those people that are panicking around this. And then there are those that are within those groups of people that are at high risk. And we need to be able to provide for that option as well. So.
Yeah, and I want to follow up on that too, Sydney. I'm not, also not saying, I, I agree with everything you've said, like, you know, following our processes of our state says that we should have our youngest learners in. And I'm not arguing with the threshold or saying pushing back against them. What I'm saying is, is that the tagging of the word high is what I'm saying, is I think it contributes to a fear basis of decision-making and not a scientific basis of decision-making. Just by virtue of saying at seventy-five, it's quote high. Does that make sense?
Well, you're making sense. I just want to make sure that tomorrow, our hundred emails isn't saying, well, they said we should pick a new set of numbers, because our hundred emails we get tomorrow often have a very interesting retellings of what we say.
Fair enough. Yes, I'm not saying we need, thank you for that clarification. I'm saying is that we, we need to ground ourselves in something to say that I don't want us to contribute to the, to the media spin cycle of that seventy-five were what, what high is. That's, that, that's, I don't want to contribute to the fear part.
I am, I am, I am fully on board.
And that high is, is kind of a misnomer, because high would be five hundred cases. I mean, I mean, there is really high, and we are not talking about doing something at that level. And yes, these could have just been level one, two, and three. And that would have helped a lot instead of having, you know, one of them called high, because even in this category, we can support having our youngest learners, which I easily take in as our K one kids in our buildings. And we should still be working towards that while we're in this level. Now, as to Ron's point, we'd really like to see these numbers level off, because if they just continue to be going up, we're going to exceed that hundred. And maybe that, that starts to be an important distinction. So but all the work that needs to go into making the classes and preparing the routes and getting everything ready so we can pull the trigger and give our community that, let's say, one week notice we're going, it all needs to be in place, so we are ready.
And, and before I call on Suzanne, and, and to that point, you know, trying to just, where that, where that number hits, we're, we're trying to get the kids in. And whether, I, I do like what you said, but it's not necessarily, is that really high? And again, going back to, I don't want anyone to feel like I don't care about the teachers that are coming and that no one's going to catch COVID. Because even when it's high, or even when it's moderate, we're going to still follow all of those safety protocols. Right? All those mitigations will still be in place when it's thirty per hundred thousand. So nothing about what we do once kids are in school will change as those numbers drop. They'll still be required to wear the masks, so it will still be doing. So I do want to say that, that, to me, that those things will still happen even as those numbers start dropping. Okay, Suzanne, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I wanted to say that I agree with absolutely everything that Sydney said. And also, as part of the spin we see out there, I saw something recently that, well, I don't understand why the board has given up on remote learning so quickly. The teachers are working really hard to make remote successful, and the board's just giving up on it and going in another direction. And I want to just emphasize what Sydney said. We are talking about the youngest learners. We are talking about K one, which is where we see the most risk and most potential learning loss in remote learning. I want to say personally, and I think I speak for the board, we are all very supportive of the work that the teachers are doing to make remote learning successful. And that's going to be hugely important, because best case, short-term, we're looking at K one and fingers crossed to three. That's still a whole lot of other grades that are doing remote learning for foreseeable future. And we are very, very supportive of that, trying to provide as much professional development, et cetera, et cetera. It's just that focus on getting our youngest, most vulnerable learners in class, if their families are comfortable with them being.
I did want to jump in real quick, just let the board know that we'll be meeting with IEA, our teachers' union, again tomorrow for a big chunk of the day. Their plan, the planning is moving forward. I don't want you to think we've kept the, the foot, the foot's not off the pedal. I'm having my transportation department both do boundary work and rework the routes potentially. You know, we have a, a meeting of the minds on a schedule that, between the parties. And we spend a lot of time working through health and safety issues. So I'm positive on, on the progress we have made or continue to make with IEA. And as Superintendent said, the goal is to be ready to rock and roll as soon as the opportunity arises. And I don't, and I'm, I'm not an expert, and I'm not going to opine on case numbers, because that's way, I will pine on numbers. I do like my numbers, but I, case numbers is something I'm not going to opine on. I like, you know me, I like to have an opinion on almost everything. But I do want you all to know that from my operations staff to collective bargaining and HR, we're not, we're not stopping working. In fact, I was, I was just messaging the president of IEA back and forth, and she's like, would you please remind the board that we are going to meet all day tomorrow? And we're, we're moving forward with the planning. So I just want, I wanted everybody to know that. You know, and not that we are ready to go next, next week, but we still have a time horizon in, in mind. And we're moving towards that horizon. But, and at the same token, I do agree with Dr. Gallinger, there is a window that is going to close based on whether in case counts that, that we are cognizant of. And so we have not, we have not lost that. And Superintendent and I talk about that closing window all the time. So, you know, that's, that's my two cents in the conversation.
Director Mullins, and then we'll go with Executive Director or Assistant Superintendent Branca.
Did you call me, Marnie?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a really important conversation we're having, and, and I think Suzanne just hit on something that's been in the back of my mind for, for a while now, that may be really hard to digest about the work that we do. I know I've been digesting it in the last two years, but our need is to work ahead of, ahead of when things need to be in place. And so what people may not realize is, we were talking about the importance of our remote learning and remote learning platform in February of last year. That's, we were having deep and detailed conversations in February. They became a lot more real in March and, and after. But there's a, a, a need to act ahead. So there's absolutely no, I guess, abandoning of the remote learning. In fact, I've said before, and I'll say again, it's a capability, a modern capability we have to have in school systems. It's wonderful. We've developed. Can it get better? Of course. But that was, we just, we started that in February. Now what we're talking about is, okay, how do we bring people back? And yes, that may feel early for people, but it has to be ahead of when that can all happen, because it's a, it's a big ship. And so I just think that's really important for folks to wrap their head around is, it's, it's a different time and space continuum, a little bit of how we have to operate to go into the future. I think it's also important, what I think is great about some of the public commentary tonight, and certainly what we receive in email, is the push on the, about the older students. And not to forget about the older students. I have a high schooler now, which I still can't wrap my head around. But certainly, I just guess my statement is, there is no forgetting about the older student. There's obviously reasons, and Dr. Gallinger can talk about them much more eloquently than I can, about the differencing and staging and the age differences of why that matters. But I think what's important that we have to process tonight is the push on, then what else is it? What are the other opportunities? What are the other connection points? Our student leaders who joined us pushed on that, and maybe that's more, you know, how we're thinking more with our PTSAs, and how we're thinking more with some of our other organizations on what is the additional community and connection building that has to happen as well. But I just had to be super clear that I think that pushes the right one, certainly needed in my own home, and important. And, and we have to, we have to do some more work on that. But I think this is maybe one in the PTSA realm that we, you know, we, we have to join ranks and, and talk about how do we help build back that community as well.
And let me just add to the end of this, and then I know Jody, but I, I, I want to be clear too. I know as Suzanne, Suzanne said, there's been, you know, a lot of talk about why are we giving up on remote? And I want to be clear that the board, from the very beginning, when we said we were going to go and start school remote, said that our intent is to keep reevaluating this and get students back into school. And so to, to people that think we're giving up on remote is not at all a fair assessment of what the board has been doing, because although we started remote, we were very clear. We have every intention of getting our students back in as soon as we can, mitigating the risk to the best of our ability. Okay, now Jody, sorry.
I just was going to take on to what CFO Jake Cooper shared, and that is, and I, and I said it in the video presentation as well. Our, our elementary principals are doing an outstanding jobs with, of the plans that they've submitted to myself and Executive Director Mundell as far as what protocols will be in place throughout the school day, when we are ready to welcome our K one students back. And so I, I, I want to reassure folks too, that we are moving forward. We're collaborating with HR, looking at, starting to look at staffing as far as how many remote, how many in-person conversations will be getting, be beginning out at the building level with teachers and the teams out in the buildings to help in that process as well. So I, I just want to make sure folks know that we, we have not stopped. We have not halted any, any of our planning efforts. And we're continuing to move forward so that we, we can bring students back in person.
Dr. Gallinger.
I would just say also, when you look at the, the King County guidance, right, they don't really know which direction this is headed. They're trying, but you'll notice that it's been hovering in the low nineties. It's been like ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four. It's been kind of staying there. And that's why you're seeing the R not number has dropped from one point six, one point five, one point four, because they're seeing like, oh, well, we came up into the nineties, but we're not really zooming past it. So then therefore the spread must be lower. And so it, it isn't where they exactly know the trend. And that's why we, that's why I, I think that, that try and brush artificially select a number in our heads, even if we're not publicly saying, which I don't even think we have a number privately. I think that, that's why that, that part is hard for me. When I look at, in Pierce County where I work, I mean, the number is one fourteen today. And there are students in school, and they've been in school for now three weeks, in K one in Pierce County. And to my knowledge, they haven't contributed nor seen any cases of COVID in their buildings. That being said, I would be under the assumption that all high-risk employees would not be working in our buildings in this K one environment, and same thing for our families. So I would never envision or believe that any of our kindergarten or first grade teachers or staff members or students would, you know, get ill enough to need to be hospitalized. If I thought that was the case, there is no way I would ever suggest or encourage the district to bring back our kindergarten and first grade students, since they're building. I, I just don't believe those things to be true enough. I thought that, there is no way in good faith that I can ever recommend that.
Any other questions or comments?
President Moraldo, a couple of things. One, just an observation too, even for our public. It's a great reminder that we do our business like we're doing it right now. Our meetings are conducted before the public. So some might be sitting there, wow, you guys haven't talked this through. Well, this is where we talk things through. So just to be clear, that's the way school boards function in Washington State. We, we meet before the public. I don't, I don't get to call a, a six-hour meeting like I do with my cabinet every Monday, where we can sit and hammer these things out. So just wanted that, to make that observation. And back to the conversation about a number, and why I didn't state a number is because frankly, it isn't, it isn't just about a number. It, it's about, it's about people reaching a consensus that the timing is right. And that's a tough thing to do. You know, I don't have the luxury of convincing one group of people that now it's time to bring the kids back. And I'm not the king or a czar. It has to be done in a collaborative fashion. Obviously, I have my five bosses here who give me a direction and guidance and kind of set the, the guardrails for my work. But I have to talk with my employee groups and my own leadership team. And so that, and, and I get that, that, that kind of political type language can be frustrating to people. So, you know, again, I apologize for any confusion that I may create by my statements, but I recognize the work that is happening at the negotiations table, the work that happens with my leadership team and the planning that they're doing. And frankly, I, I have to unpack what I learned from these board meetings too, and reflect on the conversations that we all have together, and figure out where to try to steer this ship in the direction. And I will say that there are other issues that I have with the documents that we use to guide us. And I don't have other documents that, that I can lean on. But we just had a large conversation about, you know, and I love your idea, Director Moore, about why didn't they just say stage one, two, or three? Why'd they have to call it high, moderate, and low? Because that, the language matters. But even there, in the educational modality section, under high, it starts by saying strongly recommend distance learning. And then it goes on to say, with an option for limited in-person. So, you know, I honestly, so back to Director Gallinger's very, at the very beginning of this conversation, you don't, I'm convinced personally, Ron Thiele, that we could bring kindergarten and first grade in and not create a spread of virus in our community as a result of doing that. But it's not enough to just convince me. We have to, I have to work with the people who are going to actually stand in front of those children every day, be the ones who take the temperatures of those children and, and guide them, or, or have to assess when one comes down with a symptom that needs to be addressed in the moment. And, and so it isn't just about, it isn't just about me. And it, it's, it's difficult right now. I mean, we have a very divided community in some ways, and, you know, President Moraldo, you referenced kind of some of the media and stuff. I get it. I can watch that stuff. If I, if I, rarely am I home that long, but if I am and I watch it, it, I can catch myself getting freaked out and then have to remind myself, oh, yeah, I don't live in Madison, Wisconsin. I live in Issaquah, Washington. And so, but it's sometimes with the way the reporting happens about it, I, I understand that that's problematic. But I don't want, my, my real goal was not to alarm my staff, because I was accused of trying to jam this down their throat, and the board knows the reaction we were getting from, from our, our staff, when that was the perception. I also don't want to be accused of stealing hope away from my community, because they think I'm never gonna, I'm not even trying to get kids back into school, because I absolutely want to get kids back into school. And I believe starting with our K one is the first group of general ed students is the way to go. And I would remind people, we have kids in our schools. We have about five hundred that we serve for between our childcare and our, our, our serving our students with special needs. And we have done so very successfully. Kudos to our staff for doing that. So I think we've proven that we can do it. I get that there's a reluctance. Well, sure, you can do it with five hundred spread out. Can you really do it when you start bringing back in fifteen hundred at a time? I believe we can. But I also recognize I have to listen and try to address the concerns that are brought forward by our employees. I, I don't want to be cavalier about it in any way, shape, or form. And lastly, I just want to say, well, I completely recognize and have a tremendous And lastly, I just want to say, well, I completely recognize and have a tremendous concern about the academic losses that I believe do happen, even as hard as our teachers are working and, and trying to do their very best in remote teaching. I don't believe it's a substitute for in-person instruction. Even modified in-person instruction, I think, would have real benefit for our students. And, and so that's why I, I am advocating for that and will continue to advocate for that. So it, I get it. It's tough. People are, you know, are pretty split out there on a lot of this. And my, my effort is to just help people understand we can do that. Listen to all of the detail in that video. We're not just haphazardly talking about bringing students or our staff back into this environment. We are doing it with a tremendous amount of care. And, and, and I believe it can be done, but again, it's not going to be done by an edict from me. It's going to have to be, I just believe we've got to build a consensus and coalition around this. I don't think we have to wait until the numbers get way down or anything like that. But I, but I think we have to have good, honest conversations about it, just like we are right now. And then the last thing I want to say too, while I am deeply concerned about the academic loss, I am equally concerned about the mental health, social, emotional impact. And I would encourage people to read that Harvard Gazette piece from the Public Health School because that's a lot of what they talk about, you know? And I've said this, and I think I may have said this in, in some public settings as well. We got a ton of data about what's going on with COVID. We have very little data, at least that I can find. And I know Dr. Gallinger sees it more in his, in his day job. But I, I just have a belief that the impact of this isolation is having on the socially emotional wellbeing of our students. I, I, that's what keeps me up at night right now. It's not that, look, we're, we're going to mitigate and we're going to get kids back to standard at some point in their academics. I just worry about the long-term harm that some of this might be causing, which is why I'm also concerned about our older students because I, I see what's happening there too. I understand why people want us to try to figure out a way to get groups of five back in. And I understand why the, the young man from Miss Quahai said what he said about wanting to have even virtual drive-by opportunities. Cause I think we're all craving some form of actual human interaction, even if we have to do it from six feet apart. But, you know, I mean, those are all the challenges. And, and again, thank you for allowing me to just share those were some of the thoughts as I listened to the conversation, President Maraldo.
Thank you. Any other comments or feedback? Harlan.
I, I think that our superintendent, President, going to segue into secondary because I think that we've heard clearly tonight that our community feels like all's we're talking about is getting kids back. And we do that, we're talking about K1, which is absolutely true. But we haven't lost sight of the impact on our secondary students or all our students from the social model. We're one of the few districts that have a K-12 approach to social emotional learning. We've invested millions of dollars each year, even this year, on our mental health counselors through Swedish. And we're continuing to do that. So my question is, is when can we get some sort of update or board discussion on what are we really doing to support these secondary students? And, you know, we need to think outside the box as far as what, how are we leveraging dollars to get our community partners or frontier parent community out there? I'm totally fine if our staff don't feel comfortable doing soccer codes at Pine Lake. Then like those are dollars that can be allocated to get programming out for these, our families that can't participate in year-round soccer and can't afford to spend whatever amount of money to do that because I want to make sure that there's equitable opportunity for our kids across the district. And I think that's what I would like to have some sort of conversation next about because I don't foresee a time when we're going to have secondary kids in our buildings. I, I just don't do, I, I can't, I can't foresee that. Maybe something will shock me by next April. A short of some shock. I, I think that now is the time when we start saying, well, what are we going to do? Because it's a long game and our kids deserve us to be doing everything we can to, to do that for them. And I totally respect if our teachers and staff don't feel comfortable doing that. But just because they don't feel comfortable doing that, doesn't mean that our facility should stay closed and that we shouldn't be supporting kids. Because there's enough parent volunteers out there for us to pull this off.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I was going to say something about secondary before we took off because that's my biggest concern. I have a senior, I couldn't, I was really shocked at how absolutely she delighted she was just to be able to go to get her picture taken where they stood six feet apart in line, just to be able in, with her, with her advisory, just to be able to see the kids. Some of which drive her crazy, but she still got to see them. And I think, you know, and that has helped her for like the entire week since that happened. And she's been, it, it kind of rejuvenated her in some ways. And, and so I want to know, and maybe we, you know, we'll have to have further discussions. What are we doing for secondary to do things like our students were talking about? How do you get engaged in small things? Just the importance of human connection apart from video. It is so different for these kids. It's so different for us. You know, I have the luxury that once every two weeks I go into the district office to do agenda planning. So I have more of a connection with our superintendent. And so it's, it's a different thing. And, and I'm like Harlan, I, I bet, I've tried to map it out. I do not know, how do you do some full remote, some hybrid in a secondary setting, especially in a high school setting? How do I, I'm like, I'm a kid, I'm doing in-person hybrid, but my Spanish III teacher is the only one teaching Spanish III and is working remotely? Or vice versa, I'm full-time remote, but my Calc BC, which there's only one of, is in-person. Where are my decisions? So I don't, I don't see a pathway, and I'm hoping that staff can see a pathway because I don't see a pathway to getting us to secondary in school. And how that's going to happen, especially in the high school. And so I, I think more thinking along that because it's a real concern. Cause we talk about, well, in April, and I don't see how you can do that without saying we're going back in person. And, you know, even if it's a hybrid, everybody goes. And I don't see how we do that. So I know, I hate to be a Debbie Downer, but that's kind of where I've been sitting, especially the last week or so going, I don't know how to get there. And I feel like we give false hope. I don't want to take kids' hope away. I'd rather say, how can we tell them how we can engage them? Because it is likely it's not going to be going to class every day.
Director Maraldo, we, it is a, I have told you, I think before, it is an intellectual puzzle that I've been unable to crack in a clean way without severely limiting student choice. I think that's your trade-off if you're going to ever run some type of hybrid or cohort model at the, at the secondary level. And I know Executive Director Hood is, her mic is off, Deputy Almeiz. He's adjusted his tie, so they're going to talk a little more eloquently than me. But I've been involved in staffing and scheduling for many, many years. I, in my little, little brain, can't, can't figure an eloquent way out to offer a robust remote and a, a hybrid, particularly our seven-period and block schedule, so.
Right, well, this summer, I think we had some really good student reps, parent reps, staff reps from multiple bargaining units in on the secondary scheduling work group. And really, I think we came to the conclusion that we have two hybrid models we think would really work nicely. If, and, and this would again depend on how many kids we could actually have in physical spaces. But we did a little bit of a test when we thought this was still on the, on the table. And we tested some classrooms to see, based on our funkiest numbers, like for example, a band or choir orchestra that tends to run large. And based on some of our funkiest spaces, maybe like a funny computer lab that we built into a facility after it was originally built. And we, we tested some of those anomalies to see. We were very confident we could keep the class sizes down if we ran 25% of the student population through the building. So based on family groups, say on a Monday, a different 25% on a Tuesday, a different 25% on a Thursday and a Friday. And we felt like we could pretty confidently say that kids could retain their schedules. And again, it even goes beyond student choice. Mr. Cooper's totally right, but it's also about grad requirements. Kids are scheduled into stuff they need to graduate. So it's, we really can't just, nah, throw that out. And, and tell it unless the State Board of Ed takes some action. So therefore, we felt with the 25% population, we could pretty well guarantee we could manage the physical distancing and the masks and all the appropriate mitigation strategies. At 50% of the student population, which we really wanted to work, we weren't that confident. We would definitely have had to do more work to determine whether or not we could manage the physical distancing. Because for example, at 50% of a choir class, you might have 40 students still. Can I still adequately spread them out? And if so, how do I know that, right? We would have just had to do more testing and proofing to ourselves.
And I would add to that, in the work that Executive Director Hood and I have been doing with the work group last summer and with high school principals. You know, there are some different scenarios that we've looked at in a hybrid for high school. I do think however, in working with Executive Director Morse and our middle school principals, that we have devised a couple of different options around cohorting middle school students. A little bit of some creative work had to be done around our math courses and, and our science courses. However, I do think that cohorting middle school students is definitely something at the middle level that's significantly more doable than it is at the high school level. And Jason, I don't know if you want to add anything to my, to that?
Yeah, I've, I've been developing a model for all of our middle schools where we could do some cohorting. It would be a combination of cohorting and some online learning. The biggest hurdle is the math class, just because there's multiple choices as far as what math classes students need. And there's, you know, we would not want to limit a student's ability to stay in a math pathway that will follow them through the rest of their high school career. But I do have some models that are, if cohorting is the avenue we choose to go down, that I think could work out quite well. And continue to provide students with in-person opportunities primarily for their language arts, social studies, and their science course. And then electives and math, we would leverage through online or virtual learning like we've been doing. So yeah, those plans are, are well in effect, as has been spoken about by other folks. Kind of wanting, trying to be ready when we can leverage a return to be ready to do that.
President Maraldo, I would just note too, that while I certainly understand and don't even disagree with the challenge of bringing particularly high school students back for in-person learning, that doesn't mean there's not other things that we could bring students back. Kind of to Director Gallinger's point too, what he wants to discuss, well, what else might we do? If we get to a place where we have the opportunity to bring students in, whether it be for support services or even activities. Again, I would anticipate these would have to be small groups of students. But right now, essentially our buildings, they're locked out of our buildings. The public is locked out of our buildings. And so, well, it may be a challenge to, you know, be able to hold a US history class back in a high school anytime in the near future. I don't want to give up the hope that we might be able to bring small groups of students back for other services or other needs. Because I think to, to your point about your daughter's picture, Marnie, I, I think that even that would be welcomed by, by students. And, and I love it when you can come in and, and see me in person because I spend a lot of time up in this space by myself and I don't like it very much. So I think that should be, you know, we talk a lot about whether it be for clubs or whether it be for athletics, but there might be other, other reasons we would want to bring small groups of students in too, that, that aren't about a club or an athletic or, or an activity, but might be about some other kind of support that we could do. Even a small group, we have, we have student groups that are ran by counselors. You know, they'd have to, in this case, they'd be six feet apart and all of that. But so I, I do think, you know, and I will say this too, I guess. It's not that we haven't thought about that. We did since late, I would say since about the 22nd of July. We spent a lot of time thinking about to the, the ISD Live, beefing up the remote teaching and learning because we knew regardless, we were going to be, you know, here we are, we're sitting at about 22% of the school year. We're into it now and we are still fully remote. And so it's important that that system be as good as we can make it and that we can support our students and our families. But that doesn't mean that, I, I do not want the ISD to become a remote district. That is, that, that's not for me. This is a temporary situation as we, I think it's titled appropriately, as we manage the impact of COVID-19 on our school system. That's what, that's what the remote learning system was about. That's what this hybrid in-person is about. And I, I'll be honest, the goal, the goal that's out there for me is school as we once knew it. And I recognize that's, that's a ways away. I'm not, I, I, I'm not naive. I recognize that that's going to take some time and, and it's not going to be solved by educators. It's going to be solved by epidemiologists in the medical community and our own behavior. That's what ultimately is going to get us back to where I believe we all want to be.
Any other thoughts?
Well, I would just say, well, I appreciate hearing from the secondary planning for hybrid. I don't think that was what Marnie and I were talking about. I guess I would say, I would, I would hope the focus would be on shelving those plans and focusing on how can we actually serve kids today? And next week? Because we know we're not going to be serving them in the classroom. So how can we serve them now? And that's what I'm not hearing from our district that I want to be hearing.
Going back to that idea of the teaching is happening. And, and I think teachers have taken a lot of time to get into teaching. But are they facilitating learning? And that's a different modality of getting that done. And so it's a switch of that focus of how do we ensure that each student is actually learning?
Well, that, that certainly, but I, I, I think what I do hear too is that how we serve students, it isn't all just about academics. I mean, that's clearly the main part of our mission. But, you know, when I hear students say, it was exciting just to do a drive-up materials pickup. Okay, what, how can we do other things like that? That's what I heard our students saying as well. What more can we do? I think that's what we're hearing from our parents of athletes. It's, I, I, I think they all recognize they're, you know, we're not going to be back having competitions, you know, against schools from Seattle and things like that anytime soon. It's really more about, can we just get, can we find ways to get small groups of kids together to, to just give them an opportunity to get out of the house even? Now, I did want to make a, another comment because it, it, you know, I, I think I'm going to put my HR hat on, which I, I don't like wearing this hat very much. But first of all, I haven't heard our coaches or our club advisors or anybody say, oh my God, I don't want to do anything in person with any kids. Now, some of them may feel that way. For some of them, it in fact may not even be appropriate given an underlying health condition. But I want to be clear, I, I haven't heard our coaches say that. And I've, I've actually, I can think of at least one email from a coach that I've had who said, we want to do this. We want to be able to do this. You know, it's kind of like you, you're the one stopping us from doing it. So I, I want to recognize that. But this idea of if it has the ISD label on it, if it's an ISD-sponsored activity and we're using a volunteer to run it, that volunteer is going to have to go through a pretty rigorous screening process. Cause we just don't let people be alone with our students that haven't had background checks and that, you know, even if you, and I'm not talking about a volunteer background check because a volunteer background check doesn't allow you to be alone with a student or or it, you know, that is still kind of under the auspice of supervision of staff. So, you know, in essence, before we would use an outsider to run an activity or a club, they'd have to go through, through, you all require this of me in your executive limitations. They'd have to be background checked and everything. And that's not an easy process to do. But remember, it was, it was noted earlier, we also have a fiduciary responsibility. If we just open up, let somebody come in, have access to our kids and heaven forbid, they do something inappropriate. We've just opened up our district for, for litigation. So we just have to be careful. We can't throw, I get it that it's a time of a very unusual and unique time of a pandemic, but we can't throw our practices out the window. We have to still follow our, our HR practices. And that's how we help keep, keep our kids safe too.
Anne.
Well, and I don't think any of us are suggesting that we do anything that wouldn't keep our kids in the safest possible place and with appropriate, you know, whether they're volunteers or our staff as coaches. But I think the idea of getting kids in the secondary, a chance to have a way to have an engagement, whether it's around a small group or sports and conditioning or a club or any kind of a group, that that impact would carry over into their academics. It would simply, it would help their ability to be in the right frame of mind and have interactions again that would also help support their learning because it would allow them to then maybe have a whole person sense again of being engaged with the community and engaged with their schooling.
Josh.
Yeah, I was just going to say, for the work that we're going to continue to do to try to make that happen, I think we can't forget the importance that, around equity and that transportation and whatnot, as we work to provide these opportunities. Not every, not every student has a car. Not every student can get to those who really want to. So that's definitely for our team going to be a part of that equation as well, is how can we enable, as we create these opportunities for kids to come in in small groups? How can we give that opportunity to all kids? Because I, I can envision if we don't put time in on that end and planning that piece out, there's going to be a lot of kids who would like to take part in those activities that wouldn't be able to get there. So I think that's going to be an important piece of our planning as well.
Okay. I'm looking at the clock and we're about 15 minutes past our marked time. So are there any other questions or comments for our staff? Okay, thank you so much. Our next item on our agenda is the report out for our board retreat. And we had the great opportunity of 16 hours of Zoom together last October 12th and 13th. And in the board agenda packet, you'll see the topics, the key topics that we spoke about during that time. So I wanted to give an opportunity for board members to kind of provide your feedback around our time together. Suzanne, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I will start because I always like meetings where I learn something. And I will say that I learned some things at this meeting. Two specific areas. One was Elena's presentation on the Equity Department and what was going on about the district with equity. And there are a lot of programs that are starting out or are moving along that I was not aware of. And so for me, that was a very useful update. I feel really good about the work that's going on in the district in that area. And so that was reassuring and I learned something. The other thing that I learned a lot about was the presentation on our school resource officers. I had no idea the amount of training that those people went through made me feel a lot better about the program and how it's operated and how it's managed. I still would want to get some input around, input from the students about how they feel about it and how things are going. But I learned quite a bit from that as well. So those were kind of two high points for me from the retreat.
Who would like to go next? Sydney.
I can go because to piggyback off of the last comment, I think for me was a very, not only informative, but really important conversation about the Student Resource Officer and how they fit into the school community and their goals and purpose for that role. You know, I think it will be incredibly important to get some student feedback on, on that role. And so I know I spent time during that conversation on the, the safety, the district safety side and really understanding some of the protocols, like physical safety in the buildings, et cetera. So I, I just, that was a very helpful presentation for me. It was, it was really, I think, important. And then we certainly spent a good amount of time on talking about school improvement plans as well. And I think there's just more, it's another sign of how different our situation is today and how will we look at progress in the schools? And what do, what do we think about even the data? We want to see to see, to see progress. And I just really appreciated all the insights from, from the, from the team. And it's, it's such an, it's such a broad topic that I think we're going to have to keep, keep working on as we go through this, this era of remote and then hybrid and other, other forms of school. It's, it's definitely going to be quite different.
Anne.
I'll, I'll speak to, for a moment about our conversation about homework, which homework and grading have been two things we've worked on for quite some time. And we had a lengthy conversation with the high school principals about homework and the guidance that's going out to the staff. I mean, we're, we're in it, we're, we had a bit of a conversation about just homework in general, the meaning of homework and, and really what value there can be from it as far as practice for students without it becoming an enormous burden. We're also in this environment with the remote learning and some of the stress that's being put on our students regarding homework that's happening now. Of course, it's, it's always one of these conversations where we never quite get to something in the end as far as what exactly we can do about homework. And it's just one of those things that we'll have to keep talking about, but it's really impactful right now on our students in the environment that they're in.
Harlan, did you want to share?
Sure, sorry, I was having trouble on meeting, I'm not sure why. I appreciated that we had a conversation talking about longer-term work to realign and sort of reorganize our ELs. And I hope a future conversation will happen where we, you know, reorganize EL2 and EL12 in order to, I think, focus on what treatment of people and treatment of students are and sort of what our learning environment is. And I think within that learning environment, what Director Moore just talked about as far as homework and grading. And I think we do have a lot of work to do there. And I appreciate the information and the draft work that Director Weaver has done, that I will get back to her soon. But I think in that discussion of the treatment of people, we really, and I don't think we got any formal conclusion yet, but I think we need to not let this one go. And sometimes I feel like in retreats, we can sort of talk about it and then kind of put it on the shelf for a year. And I don't want to do that with this. But how do we best explore and create a culture where we hear about or can track or keep our pulse on an informal complaint process? Because as a board, we only hear the very tiny few, which is great, formal complaints. But I don't think we're going to get to the culture that we want to see district-wide until there is a culture of if you see something, say something. And I don't think we're there yet. And I know that we have work to do there. And I think we shouldn't let this go until we get to a different place in that.
Yeah, I definitely felt there was, were a few areas that were unresolved. I'd say that's one. Future works is around the ELs. We started to have a conversation and said, well, this is actually can be pretty significant. And I think the other area was, excuse me, our board self-assessment. So we spent a lot of time just talking about how we're doing as a board. And I think it was interesting because in so many ways, I think we do, we put a lot of time in, we put a lot of thought in. We really try to follow our guidance and our policies and how we interacted with each other. I know that unlike, there's districts out there where the board members don't even like each other and they don't agree with each other. And I can safely say that it helps when you have a group of people that are collaboratively working together. But I think what my big come away with, work we still need to do is really around some type of strategic planning. So we have our ends and our mission, but we don't, we still haven't put together a glide path to get closer to, I'll say for the umpteenth time, reasonable progress towards what? And I know the boards are probably sick of hearing me say that, but since the first time I heard it, my first retreat as a board member, it's been a question of mine. When do we as a board finally set what we're making, what we're asking the superintendent to make reasonable progress towards? And having some type of work together. And I don't think it's something that the five of us with the superintendent can do in a vacuum. I think it's going to require actually bringing on somebody who specializes in that kind of work and working us through, trying to put together at least over the next five years, where do we want to see some focused growth? And I think having that SIP conversation as well says, I know one area. How can we take a look at our SIPs, even though we're going to have to redefine what we're measuring? Where do we want to be in five years with those measurements? Whatever it is we determine we're going to start measuring because there's no guarantee that S-BAC is going to be there.
And Marnie, I think as part of that conversation, I would like to see us also have a conversation around our mission statement and getting input from our community around that. Because we could be a lot more specific about what our mission is. And I think that would help us with, you know, reasonable progress towards what?
And then the other area was really around community engagement. I think was, was that, I don't have the standards in front of me, but standard four. Whatever it was, our top 16 things that we said we did really, really well, didn't even include standard four anywhere in there, which tells me it's not something we do really, really well. And so, and the thing about this board is I think we want to do everything really well. So I don't know how satisfied we are with that. And again, I don't know that we know how to get there. How do we get there with our community to feel like, frankly, right now, we've got some repair work to do with our community through, you know, this has been a tough pandemic and we definitely haven't been perfect at everything we've done. I don't think anyone could, but there's a fear and distrust. And how do you rebuild that? Because we can't collect feedback from a community that doesn't feel safe giving us feedback or doesn't feel heard giving us feedback. I think that's probably more accurate, that I think a lot of people don't feel heard. Especially to the public comment where they said they didn't hear, hear back from that letter that was sent about athletics. I thought for sure, I have an email that we were supposed to send, so I will go back and check to make sure that you received it from Executive Director Hood. But to that end, how do we get there? So the thing about our retreats, I always say, there's not a whole lot of treat in retreat other than spending time with you. But there's a lot of work that comes out of it. So we go for eight hours together for two days in a row and then come out with more work to do.
President Meraldo, I know one conversation that we didn't get a chance to really, you know, wrap up was related to this year's School Improvement Plan processes and exactly what you would like us to do. I, I know Executive Director Melish came in and reported on that. I know he's here, listening to this conversation, hoping to get kind of some clear guidance exactly on what the, what the board would like. Because I know there was a discussion about keeping it, there was some back and forth around having it be a little, obviously, it's going to be different this year, it has to be. But maybe that the board would want to take a, kind of a departure from your normal way of having your School Improvement Plan conversation. So I just wanted to remind us of that conversation as well.
Uh, Harlan.
Yeah, you know, I think, and part of that conversation for me was, you know, I think that we could talk about what engagement looks like in our buildings and sort of how we can develop effective measures of that. And I think part of this pandemic work that we're doing is, I think there are things that we will learn through this process that we will take forward with us and do again and do better. And I think one of the things that Sydney has said is sort of have the capacity to do remote learning is probably something that we should have. And that's probably the learnings we will take forward from this. I think one of the things that we should use as an opportunity to take forward is like, how do we measure engagement? And how do we better look at what that is? And so I think I asked you at our agenda planning to look at, there's a Bellevue company that does like engagement surveys, K-12. And sort of that way, it's like, not something that your staff has to come and make up. And also it's just normed by the state and supported by all the alphabet soup folks. So I didn't know if you had any sort of.
I haven't had a chance to follow up on that Director Gallagher, but I absolutely made a note of that, yes.
And I, I wrote it down because we might want to have that as a future agenda topic or a future work study to really talk about that, so.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would be good so we could kind of bottom it all out.
Yeah. And I do think we want to talk about what we saw. I think the part that we didn't ever get to is what we felt we saw at the SIPs this past year. And I think that goes into the strategic planning because that's where it's going to really come out of is what did we see in those SIPs? And how do we take that data for the whole district? And then really start to aggregate about, is there targeted things that we need to be doing? Is there, you know, do we need kind of an overall, well, a strategic plan that kind of leads to a five-year SIP plan for the district? Like, we want to see these different things grow.
So for the board, just since I, since we didn't have anything with the effectiveness.org would be the, where you'd look at. And it's the Center for Educational Effectiveness, I think. It's a company in Bellevue that does these engagement surveys. And you'll see there are whole sorts of things, but that way, as a board member, you can go look at that. It was utilized in one building in our, in my former district. It was really helpful with sort of getting a sense on sort of what is the engagement and cultural impact given a building.
Okay, and did anyone want to maybe speak to what Superintendent Bailey was saying about expectations for next year? Because I think we talked a little bit about doing it more by grade band of elementary, middle, high, it may even be early elementary, late elementary, middle, high, just to be able to get them. Well, no, that wouldn't work either. I'm trying to think, how do you split up elementary, but that doesn't work? Because there's so many of them, it's, or it's just a really big, long meeting.
I would be in favor of us doing it by, by grade band this year and by focusing on engagement this year and have academic data presented by our district staff because it looks unfair to ask our buildings to do that for new one-year, one-time-only data that they're going to have.
Director Gallagher, do you, do you recall what, and you may not, this, I know it was in your previous district, what the turnaround time on that was? I mean, is this something that? they have the capabilities of administering in a relatively timely manner? So something we could do in the next couple of months, get the data back and have time to digest it and start reporting it out in the SIPs? By, I think our first SIP is scheduled for February or late January?
Yeah, I think it was one to two months.
Okay. We'll get on it. We'll get some concrete data on that and, and cost it out, of course, and stuff too.
And there may be lots of better options out there. I don't, I don't know. That's that. This is obviously not my wheelhouse.
And I'm not an epidemiologist either. So I can relate. Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Anything that we missed that you wanted to share out?
I guess I haven't heard from the other board members on what do they really envision SIP this year looking like?
Oh, I thought that's what we just said. We were going to come back and do that as a whole topic in and of itself. Or no, now I can definitely talk about it.
Well, we, maybe we need to, maybe we won't. I, it may be a short.
Yeah, so I can talk about my piece for sure. I think this year round, a lot of it, I guess the engagement, I want to make sure we're able to talk about is sort of family engagement as well as some sort of input from students and parents on the learning experience from their perspectives into the process, along with some of the, I guess, more regular attendance. For elementary, those, how many people were participating in the early, the early conferences that were scheduled? So I just want to make sure there's a broad range of engagement so that we're getting some sense of student voice, parent voice, as well as as teacher, because I think there's some different perspectives in there. And then I'm not sure when we say by grade band, do we really mean by grade band?
I just meant elementary, middle, high.
Okay, because I was like, oh, like first, second, third, that would be a lot. Yeah, I think there's value in, I guess before we're doing it by theater pattern. And so I know there's a lot of elementary, so if we had to break it in half or something, I think that'd be, be fine, but I would like to see instead of by theater pattern, by the, like, the elementaries, middles and highs together.
And maybe that causes us to break it into four times, four meetings, if we had half of elementary so in a time, because otherwise all of elementary, I don't know, is that, that's that's large, 15 elementary. And then do middle and high school. So it seems like for this year, that would be a better way to go. So I'd support that. And my recollection of the conversation we had was while we're sure that there's a lot of fabulous things going on in our schools in terms of the efforts that teachers and staff are, are making to try to make sure kids are engaged. We really wanted to look at it from, yeah, that's great, but how successful are those strategies at engaging? Therefore, we needed to get input from the communities, the students, the parents of, are your kids engaged? And what's, what's working well, what's not working?
Right. Because we can take certain measurements and go, look, kids are doing this. But, you know, their perspective may be different. Okay, anything else? Is that better direction for you, Superintendent Bailey?
I, I think that's helpful with what the clarity that I got was doing it by level. I'm going to say level, not grade band. It, we, we may want to look at splitting elementary. In the past, your largest single group has been, I believe, nine schools at a time. So 15 would be a fairly high tick up from that. That, you know, looking at some gathering some actual outside source data on engagement and Director Gallager gave us the one reference, we'll, we'll kind of explore that as well. I did hear Director Molling's request for measurements of some family engagement, and there may be some quantifiable things we have there, such as participation in those conferences that we held at the beginning of the year. And the, the team and I can talk about some other potential measures as well. I, I do agree with your statement, though, President Meraldo, that just being in attendance doesn't mean engagement. You know, I, I, that's a worry that I have even as I visited classes. You know, it's, it would be easy to, for me to mute my, my video and my mic right now and be over in another part of my office doing something completely different and just listening to what's happening. And, and we have no way of knowing if that, that is occurring with some students and it, it may or it may not be. And so, yeah, this will help. We'll get back together, the ed planning team. And because ultimately, we want to give clear direction to our building leaders, what we're going to ask of them to bring to the table. And we, we, you know, we want to do a good job for you. So we want to, we want to be able to provide you with the information that will help you better understand what's happening from a school improvement plan process throughout the district. So I think that was helpful. If I need, after I meet with the team, if I, I need to seek further clarification, I could always ask to put it back on the next agenda as well for, for more conversation too. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. And thank you for the, the 16 hours on Zoom. I mean, I know it's a lot. I, I was thinking about that when you realize we didn't do our, our admin retreat that way this year. We, we broke it up over multiple days in two and three-hour chunks because we didn't really think we had the stamina for, you know, two consecutive eight-hour days of retreat. You all have built up your stand, your Zoom stamina through some lengthy board meetings, and so here we are. But, uh, because, you know, for me, it actually went by relatively quickly. But again, it goes back to this craving, human interaction with people that I, let's be honest, I spend as much time with the five of you typically as I do my own family in a normal year. And now everything we do, we do virtually or through text or, or something. So it's just different.
Yeah. Well, technically, according to the analytics on YouTube, our second day was only six hours and 15 minutes because we got interrupted by power outages.
Right. Yes, I forgot about that, too.
That was fun. Anna and I both got to come into the office.
Yes, it was nice having you here.
It was, it was actually.
Socially distanced, wore masks.
We were, we all had our own offices.
Own offices.
Offices, that's why you see a.
Yep.
Yeah, in case anyone's wondering. Okay, so. So thank you for that. Always more work to do. The next item from, from our board retreat, one of the items we determined we could do was take a look at our E3 citizenship policy. And so we are going to do a first read on this. No action will be taken at this time. But we wanted to make sure that this particular and better reflected civic engagement in our, especially in our community, that's very diverse and from lots of different areas throughout the, through the world. And when we look at citizenship, what does that mean? And for many people, it refers to an actual official being a citizen of the US. And so we have a number, a vast number of our students that families are are immigrating here, are residents here. And so we want this to be reflective of our whole community. So that is posted. The significant changes are we changing the title to civic engagement. So, and it would then become civic engagement. And our main highlight would be students will live as responsible members of society. And then I don't see any other changes within this. So I don't know if there's any comment or, or questions from the board. But that will be our official first reading. So we'll have that on as a second read at our next board meeting. I hope the public, if you are listening still, we always welcome comments. So I don't know if there's anybody on right now that wanted to provide public comment regarding this item on the agenda. I'm not seeing anybody quickly raising their hands. So I think with that, we can move to the next item on our agenda, which is legislative matters. So, Dr. Gallager, do we have any updates for legislative matters?
I'm still slacking on setting up our meetings with legislators. That's on my to-do list. But I will say, we had a meeting with Marnie, I, Ron, and then the city manager, council president and council vice president of Issaquah. And that was yesterday. And we chatted about school construction updates. We chatted about the SRO and impact to our collaborative process there. And talked a little bit about what collaborative work we could do regarding best starts for kids and some early learning facility work. And there's one more topic, Marnie, I forgot what the fourth one was.
SRO, best start for kids.
We, we gave a brief construction update, not talking about the Robbins Heights property, but we did give a brief construction update.
There was a fourth topic, hold on.
I know, I forgot, I forgot what the fourth one was. You by text, so I should look.
Community communications coordination.
Yeah. We spent a lot of time thinking about that as well.
Yeah, which I thought was a good conversation.
So hopefully we can have some shared messaging on the importance of flu vaccinations, flu clinics, and should we start to see a spike in cases in this part of the county to have, you know, somewhere where we can find a shared location for drive-through COVID testing, should we ever need it? But talking about sort of our shared responsibility and ownership of doing those community communications, I think was really important. Not just now, but going forward.
Yeah.
Been having our weekly meetings with East King County school directors, as well as with public health. We looped them in last week as well as tomorrow on continued work. They did update the guidance, as you saw, and we discussed earlier in the meeting, and they plan on updating it again. I've been having multiple side conversations with Representative Callen about decision tree and how the impact is on younger learners. And it's really hard. They want, they being the state, want to provide flexibility for local districts. But I think that by not giving any more specific than younger learners, it actually has made it harder, from what I've heard at bargaining tables across our region about what the definition of younger learners really is. And so it seems like they're ready to finally delineate what that is, probably because it's getting passed post-election. So, you know, since I feel like election politics has driven a lot of this, frankly, in our state, that post-election, they're willing to finally classify that. Maybe I'm a little cynical there. But that will be welcome. And it looks like it's going to be classified as kindergarten to third grade and possibly including pre-K. So because there are some districts who do run preschool programs like ours, but there are plenty of districts that don't. And so that's why previously they've said, and our health officer for King County, Jeffrey Dujin, has said that he interprets younger learners as kindergarten and first grade. So all of the, what would be coming changes would be what is consistent with what we have been working on and planning. So those are the updates I have.
I did want to share that I have received an invitation from Marissa Rathbone, who's the government affairs person for WADA. And there's a House Ed listening tour, and there were like, I think there were four dates, so I'm scheduled to participate in the one that is going to be on October 29th, so a week from today. Since I won't have a board meeting to be at, I will spend that time with that. So I think that'll be interesting. Also, Senator Wellman was on the WADA call today, and her focus really is around, she's, she's wanting to map better connectivity, literally down to the street level. So I don't know, and she's, you know, I don't know if there's any way for us to be gathering that information to provide to her. But, you know, that's a huge undertaking that they would, you know, that they're trying to do with no money. But to really get a sense for how significant is it, especially knowing how many kids are in remote learning and what does that look like? You know, how can you receive speech therapy services if the teacher's mouth isn't moving at the same time as the words that you're hearing? Such, so. Okay, so with that, we can move on to our next item, which is works in progress. Look at that, I made up time.
Good job. Just one quick note, unfortunately, I'm double booked. I, I did receive the invitation for tomorrow morning's meeting with East King County Board Directors and Superintendents. We have an ESD planning, and I know this was not kind of the regular cadence, just wanted you to know that. And to say thank you, I have found those meetings and the fact that public health joins us to be very helpful. And I just really appreciate, and because I know that you all were a big part of getting that started, you, Dr. Gallager and President Meraldo. So I, I'm kind of bummed that I have to miss that because I've enjoyed those conversations and, and it's helpful. It's helpful to, to hear board perspective from surrounding districts as well. The big thing on works in progress, no surprise here, is our continuing ongoing work related to managing the impact of the virus. That, that consumes a lot of what we do, but as I said earlier, it's not everything for sure. We, we have a lot of other things going on in the district. But some really neat news came in that I'm excited to share with the school board. I believe it was just yesterday, but time moves a little different for me in a COVID world. But I am just very pleased to share this exciting news that one of our own Issaquah School District's school psychologist, Ms. Kristen Burwald, has been honored by the Washington State Association of School Psychologists and named the 2020 Washington State School Psychologist of the Year. Kristen is part of our birth to three team, and we're just really proud of her and the work that she does. And Dr. Bailey and the other directors in our special services department couldn't say, couldn't praise her enough. And so I just think that's really neat. We're happy for her and full of gratitude for the work that she does serving our students and our community. So good job, Kristen, and we're proud of you. I, I'd mentioned a little bit earlier that I've had the opportunity to visit some virtual classrooms, and I've got a number virtual classrooms scheduled coming up as well. I, it, it's, it's really been an interesting experience for me. I have a lot of empathy for those teachers never having to do that myself. When I was a classroom teacher, I always had the joy of getting to be face-to-face with my students in a brick and mortar setting. And so I, I appreciate what they're going through and the efforts that they're trying to make. Just one little example. I was in a math class at Skyline and put into breakout rooms. And, and then I felt so bad because when I first got into it, there was only one other student in there. I thought, oh, this poor student got the superintendent in her breakout room, but fortunately, some others joined us. But the guidance from the teacher was, please, when you go into the breakout rooms, talk to each other, you know, go ahead, interact with each other, because they were, they were working through a problem. They were solving a problem. And so I just, you know, I kind of stood back. I'm, I'm more of a fly on the wall. And they did it. And the, the other thing that was impressive was that teacher, and it wasn't through a very long period of time, visited every single breakout room. Now, she wasn't there for a long time, but she checked in on us to make sure we were doing what we were supposed to do. I may have gotten us just slightly off task because I tend to ask some questions, but it was, it was quite impressive. And I'm just thankful and appreciate the efforts they're going to. And, and I know they, they're, they're continuing trying to think of ways to be more engaging. You know, we talked about engagement quite a bit, and I know that they're trying to do that as well. So I appreciated that. And, and again, I just wanted to say one last time, thank you to President Meraldo and to our, our student interventions team. I thought they just did a marvelous job with the YMCA mental health presentation. I know that I have heard from some that were in the audience of that, that they really appreciated that. And I, I found it to be a very good comprehensive overview of all of our efforts and tying together our, our multi-tiered systems of support with our PBSES work, the expansion of our counselors that we were able to make. Thank you to our voters for passing our levies, and the addition of our mental health counselors and how well they have integrated into our system. We do have a lot to be proud of um um in, in that area where we are really trying to better serve our, our students and families. And so um, it, it was, you know, I don't know, I have to be honest, I'm not always looking forward for another opportunity for an evening activity and presentation. But um, I enjoyed it. I, 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 I had a relatively small part in it all, and uh so I got to sit back and, and uh be uh an audience member, if you will, and hear our staff. And I was really, I was really proud of the work that they did in, in that preparation. So, that's what's been happening around here, and uh thank you for the opportunity.
Next item on the agenda is announcements and correspondence. Someone to give an opportunity. If you had anything that was not on the list.
I just had one from a J. Mull about the uh uh high school, elementary school project going into permit uh with the city of Issaquah. And I forward Diane to add.
Yeah, I had that same one, Diane. And I'm about to have a coughing hit, because it's warm in my office here.
I was gonna say, I got one, I think we probably all got from the um Issaquah School District Student Equity Council. I assume everybody got that. They seem to want to meet with each of us.
Each of us.
Now, is, that's not an official school, is that an official school district organization, or is that just an organization of some students of our district?
I thought that Elena had mentioned something, but I didn't write it down, so I can't verify, but I thought there was a
Because they were all using like Gmail email address. It wasn't a school district email addresses. I, so I, I just wasn't clear, because they're using ISD.
Yeah, but Anne, who were the kids that um presented at the council meeting a couple of weeks ago about the reflections? Wasn't that this group? Or am I maybe?
I think that is that group. But again, I don't think, I don't know that it's, and maybe Ron knows. And it doesn't No.
Yeah, um, I made an assumption that it was official, and now I'm sitting here and I'm thinking, because one of the students who was at the PTSA Council is actually a recent graduate.
That's true. Yeah.
So.
Oh, it might not be, but I, I'm still a member of the public and
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not saying we don't want to talk to them. I just wanted to be clear about who it was we're communicating with.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do it. I'll, I'll find out. I'll get clarity on that.
I was gonna say, do we need to meet with them one by one? Can we meet in a group of two? I guess we can if we want, huh?
Um, okay, any others? Okay, onward to our next agenda item, which is calendar and future agenda topics. And I've not checked my email since about three, so if Diane sent something, I have not seen it.
Hello. I, I did send something out, but there really is nothing um brand new, except that there was a change on the dyslexia family engagement event, but I think you might know about that now. It's November tenth from six thirty to eight. Uh, it's gonna be online and interactive.
Okay. Diane, is there a way we can get an invitation with that Zoom information for us?
Sure.
That'd be great. And you might want to give a notification, because I have a feeling I'll have three or a board, three or more board members there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll, um, have a Right, right.
Um, and just a reminder, we're coming up, before you know it, our virtual conference will be here, and I think um, there might still be room for any breakout or some, any early sessions, if you haven't done that yet. So I, it'll be interesting, so it was actually, you know, you can actually attend it live in your office in front of your computer, so that, it will be interesting. But I do know, I think they're filming some of the stuff now, and I don't know how it's gonna work.
Days and days of Zoom.
Yes, days and days of Zoom. So maybe we can have our board night out, and we sit in a Zoom together, uh eating whatever we bring to our Zoom.
How is that gonna be different than any other day I've been living since March?
On, I'm on camera.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, so anything else with regards to the meeting schedule? I cannot believe we are at the end of October. How did that happen? So we have the one school board meeting in November, and then annual conference. And then we will be having our first December meeting, and I will likely be handing over the gavel to somebody. Okay.
Sure you don't want to stay? There's still the opportunity.
You know, there's part of me that's like, do I want to make anyone else endure this? But I think Harland's like, he's probably done. He's like, I need to be past past president. Okay, so with that, uh, we are going to adjourn into um executive session. And we will be adj- um in executive session for no more than one hour, unless we come back and extend it, but I'm hoping we won't have to. So with that, I
Are we going into a room and can we
Yes. So we will be going into a breakout room, and we will be taking a five-minute break.
Thank you. Okay. Do we get invited to the breakout room?
I think that's, that
I think
Stephen has to do that.
Oh, okay, got it.
Set it up for us. He's probably doing that right now.
So I adjourn this regular meeting, and we're gonna move into executive session.
Great.
Thank you to the public for attending tonight. Don't forget, you can watch us on YouTube, like and subscribe.
The rooms are actually still open, everybody, so if you just go down to your breakout rooms uh in your toolbar. I just left it there, so I wouldn't have to um redo them.
Okay, thank you.
And Stephen, we'll um, we'll need to add, make sure Natalie Fowler can get in, she was not in the first round, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Hi, Natalie.